Indivisible with liberty and justice.
All right, thank you. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, April 16th in the year 2024. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a schedule of 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on April 12th of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right, thanks, Cam. Before we do roll call, we do need to swear in a returning commissioner.
I, Stephen Lipsky.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all duties as alternate number two of the Jersey City Planning Board.
Perform all duties as.
Alternate number two.
Alternate number two.
Of the Jersey City Planning Board.
Of the Jersey City Planning Board.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Welcome back, Commissioner. And we also would like to welcome Councilperson Prince Ari. And could we have a roll call, please, Cam?
Yes, Chairman. All right. Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky. Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Councilwoman Prinzery. Ah, Ari, sorry. And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, we have quorum. We have six, seven commissioners present.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Could we swear in the staff, please, Mike? All right, thank you. Cam, do we have correspondence?
Yes, we have two items that have requested to carry with preservation of notice. The first item on the agenda requesting to carry with preservation of notice is item 11, case number P 2023-0086. It's a conditional use with preliminary and final major site plan. Address is 516 Tunnel Lee Avenue. They are requesting to carry with preservation of notice to June 11th. And then, the very last item on the agenda has requested to carry with preservation of notice. That is item 17. That's case P 23-0094. The address is 40 Lembeck and 40 Lembeck Avenue. It's a preliminary and final major site plan. And they've requested to carry with preservation of notice to the next meeting, which is May 7th. And again, that's with preservation of notice.
Okay, thanks, Cam. So let's move on to item 7A. Under Old Business is case P 2024-0037. Is a one-year extension for 535 Monmouth Street. Counsel, good evening. Always a pleasure to see you in person.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It is a pleasure to see people in person. Once again, this is the first time I've been here, so. This is an application to extend our site plan approval, which expires on August 23rd, 2025. I set out the reasons in the letter that I provided. There was no notice provided, but we paid the transcript fees. I don't think there are any other requirements.
Okay, Counsel, just for the record, why the reason for the extension?
Well, construction was delayed because of, obviously because of interest rates and uncertainty in this market. And the client wants to be sure that in the event they either refinance the property or begins construction, they don't want the approvals to expire. That's why we're asking it so early on.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Any questions, commissioners? Okay. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anybody here from the public?
Seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Sophia, any comments, concerns?
Yeah. Okay. Planning staff would just ask that the applicant's attorney agree to existing conditions placed in effect in the original approval.
Absolutely.
And planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P 2024-0037 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Councilwoman Prinzery.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries. Seven in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. All right, let's move on to New Business. Item 9 is case P 23-075, which technically should have been under Old Business. This is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for 319 to 321 Fourth Street. This was carried from March 5th, 2024 with preservation of notice, and testimony was taken during that meeting. We do have a number of commissioners that were present that night. I don't have that list in front of me.
It would be Chairman Langston, Commissioner Gangadin, and Commissioner Dr. Desai. Were the three present.
Okay, so Vice Chair Gonzalez, did you have a chance to read the transcript or watch the video?
I did both, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Councilperson Prince Ari?
I did both.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry, who else?
Me.
Commissioner Green?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Desai was present. Commissioner Lipsky?
I did both.
Okay, thank you. Full board. Good evening, Counsel.
Great, thank you. Michael Higgins of Castano Quigley Truami, on behalf of the applicant. This is 319 Fourth Street. It seems like all members of the board have read the transcript and reviewed, so I don't want to belabor what happened at the last hearing. There's a bit of history to this project. We initially had four parking spaces on this site in the RC3 zone. We removed two of those at the request of Traffic Engineering to accommodate more angled parking that would fit better in this rear alleyway. And at the request of the board, we have gone back to the drawing board, revised those drawings, and we're back before you with a layout with four parking spaces. So I only have two witnesses tonight. One is the architect, who's going to walk the board through the new layout. And then I do have our planner to testify briefly regarding the changes in two variances, namely the landscaping, which our variance is very minorly worsened by this change, and then parking, which is substantially improved by this change. So without anything further, I'd call my architect, Alan Feld. If we could have him sworn in.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
I'm just going to pull up my plans and share for Alan. We can get him sworn in in the meantime.
Sure, not a problem.
I do. Alan Feld, A-L-D.
Mr. Feld, good evening. Obviously, I know the answer, but just for the record, you are the architect of record on this project.
That's correct.
Okay, and you did present at the last meeting. You were qualified and sworn in at that last meeting. Your license is still current tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
I don't know if this is, doesn't appear to be sharing.
No, it's not registering. So, yeah, if you could try the other one. Yeah.
I wish there was an IT course in law school, but I must have missed that.
I took one, Counsel. Says that light's blinking. We're in good shape.
No.
I can take it apart and try and turn it to the right.
No, I don't know why it's not.
I'm getting it. Counsel, these are plans that are on the portal.
Yes, correct.
Cam, is it possible for us to share those plans for Counsel since our technology is suspect?
Yeah, we could do it.
I mean, I'm getting it from my screen.
I didn't get it.
There we go, third time's the charm.
Hey, Cam?
Cam, we have it.
So we're seeing it on the desktops when you hit Doc Screen or view Doc Camera.
Oh, you are?
But we're not seeing it up on the screens behind us.
Okay, well, then I can do that. That's easy.
Good thing Commissioner Lipsky's here.
Thank you.
This one's ours. Do you want me to walk through it?
Okay, Mr. Feld, go ahead, please.
Okay. Where should I start, Alan? I think it's just really the site plan that we need to show.
Yeah, just only the site plan has changed from the initial presentation that we did last time. Again, previously, we had two parking spaces in the rear of the building. There's an alleyway. There's a 10-foot-wide alleyway at the rear of this property. And of the suggestion from the board actually was to go back and try to add more parking. So in that, we added two more parking spaces. So we have four parking spaces at this time. Sorry. We have, we're able to accommodate for four parking spaces. One is a handicap space.
Counsel, can we see this?
And the other three are.
Do you want to, what sheet do you want us to?
A3. A3. Keep going. There you go. That's it, yeah. So you can see there are three parking spaces, regular parking spaces, and one for handicap parking. And there's an entrance way into the building for ADA requirements. And this is the only change to the application, was adding two more parking spaces.
Okay, but Counsel, you're going to have somebody else testify about the landscaping?
I'd have the planner testify very briefly. I think that concludes Alan's direct testimony. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feld. I have no questions. Anybody else?
Yeah, Chairman, in reviewing the transcript and then the video, a word that I heard repeatedly by Cam was painstakingly dealing with engineering and the planners. And what I understood from reading the transcript and looking at the video was that no matter what pitch we made to engineering, they were not going to be sold on the idea of going more than two parking, two compact parking spaces. So are we good with engineering or?
So the functionality of the four spaces works. However, for optimal circulation, they recommended the two on a more extreme slant for going in and out. But no, it functions, it can work. And as we'll see from aerial and site photos, the norm actually is just going straight in, straight out, no diagonal. And that's what prompted this entire reexamination of this site. So it's not best practices by, you know, traffic planner standards, but the board wanted to entertain this, and here we are.
So just for clarity, engineering has no opinion on this or no further opinion on the four spaces?
So Commissioner, I think planning or engineering's position was they wanted two compact spaces angled, and the board did not agree with engineering.
Nor did Cam. I get that.
Cam, so we're at kind of an impasse between what the board wants from a planning perspective and what engineering's recommending from a traffic engineering perspective.
Also, I noted that there were at least one, I think Mr. Serrano, a public speaker, who had a desire to see more parking as well, so.
That was my recollection.
So I think everybody except engineering wanted to see this. I'm good.
Okay.
Our planner does have an exhibit prepared with aerial photos to show that this is sort of the normal layout on the block and that it would work. So we'll testify a bit further to that effect. If there's no further questions for Alan, I can call up Matthew Sekler as our planner.
Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Feld. Appreciate your time.
Yes, I do. My name is Matthew Sekler. That's S-E-C-K-L-E-R. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design. Address is 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Mr. Sekler, good evening. You were also qualified and sworn in at the last meeting.
I was not, actually.
You were not?
We had a different substitute planner last night.
Okay, I apologize then. So we've qualified you in the past?
Yes, you have.
On other applications. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you. And again, as was previously alluded to by Counsel, I'm going to pull up an exhibit. It's an aerial exhibit. Let me. It's titled "Aerial Exhibit Sheet 103 Prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design." It is dated April 11th, 2024. Outlined in magenta in the center of the page is the site in question. This is the 319-321 Fourth Street. I'm going to zoom in because it's a little difficult to see from this spot. But as you could tell, a number of the lots that front along Third Street, which is basically page south of the page, you could see these are one lot with properties versus ours, which is a double lot. You could see two cars parked side by side. In this case, you actually have tandem cars plus another car parked side by side. All obviously have access to these properties through the 10-foot-wide public alley that connects Monmouth Street to Cole Street. Again, this is the norm, is these kind of head-in parking spaces. You could see a number of these lots with one car or two cars in their kind of rear alley parking areas. On Sheet 2 is actually the site in question. You could see, again, in the current state, the back of the site generally is crushed stone, some, you know, sparse grass and light vegetation, either on the property or really weeds growing through the existing crushed stone. And again, you see the parked cars that are, you know, basically behind one of the lots. I think this is the 321 Fourth Street lot. Head-in parking spaces, you could fit two with side by side on each lot. So just again, going through, there are some other properties. Specifically, the one on the right is the rear of 317 Fourth Street. You could see two cars stacked side by side, actually in tandem fashion. This is photo number four on the right-hand side. Again, these cars are perpendicular to the alley in the rear. Obviously, these cars are able to be moved in and out without any type of detriment. So again, overall, in reviewing the way that this alley works for a number of the properties that back up either that front on Fourth Street or front on Third Street, having parking in the rear is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. In fact, most, nearly all of these parking areas are perpendicular parking. We are proposing that slight angle, so again, trying to meet what the city engineering was looking for, for ease of ingress and egress, but still being able to maximize four parking spaces, including an ADA space, we think is finding a happy medium with this project. Overall, we are increasing the number of parking spaces from two to four, so lessening the variance that we previously showed before the board. In terms of landscaping, the landscaping in the rear of the site goes down 185 square feet to a total of 572 square feet, where 950 is required per code. Again, we were seeking variance previously from landscaping. It is now lessened slightly as part of this application. It is still more than what is out there today, so we're improving the current condition, which is really just some weeds and coming through the crushed stone in the rear. But again, we are seeking that variance. We do think the trade-off of being able to get the extra two parking spaces clearly outweighs the detriment of the 185 square feet of reduced landscaping in the rear of the site. So we do believe that this is, would justify a C2 variance as being a better alternate design. Overall, again, this project, you heard from the previous planner that testified on this project, all the other conclusions we had reached regarding the fact that this application does advance Purpose I, which is visual environment; Purpose A, promote health, safety, and general welfare, are still being advanced. We do not believe these minor variances of such minimal amounts represents any type of negative impact. We do not see substantial impairment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance in granting these variances.
Okay, thank you, sir. I have no questions. Anybody else? Any questions? No. Okay, thank you. Counsel, is that your presentation?
That does conclude our direct testimony.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment?
Yes, I swear. My name is Christopher Truncalli. That's K-R-I-S-T-O-P-H-E-R. And my last name's T-R-U-N-C-A-L-L-I. And I'm 317 Fourth Street, Suite 1. It's the building next door that they were just actually showing in the pictures.
Good evening, sir. We have three minutes for you.
So if you look at these plans, it's very clear that the issue that's coming up is that they're, the plans are to build this building as close as physically possible to the alleyway. The head-on parking doesn't seem to be an issue for anyone in the neighborhood. Everybody else is doing head-on parking. But currently, you're taking two buildings, which have half a story underground and two stories above ground. My building essentially is four stories, but this new building is going to be a story taller than my building because they're building up. So they're adding two stories beyond the existing structures. The buildings that they're tearing down are further away from the alleyway than my existing building, which can fit four spaces in the back. So there would be room for at least eight spaces if you look at the existing structure. But these issues with vegetation and not having enough room for parking are because this plan is to maximize the absolute amount of living space for monetary reasons at the expense of the community. And so I would say, whether it's vegetation or parking, and I do prefer having more parking spaces, the real issue here is that this plan for a new giant building is so close to the alleyway, and it's not, in my opinion, representative of the neighborhood, that we have some new developments where they're getting approval for these plans to build right up against the alleyway. But the majority of the homes that I see in that alleyway are like mine, where they may have garages, they may have spots for parking, but the houses aren't built so close to the alleyway that we run into these issues. So essentially, the issue I have is I think the real problem here is that these plans shouldn't be that close to the alley. And that's really all I had to say, so I can yield my time.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Is there anybody else here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anybody else from public?
Sir Chair, seeing no more public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, so first, planning staff's going to do our usual spiel and ask that you agree to the planning staff's conditions in our memo dated January 4th of this year. Are those conditions acceptable?
Those conditions are acceptable.
Okay, super. So firstly, just want to reiterate this because it was mentioned in the first meeting that the as-of-right construction on this site would necessitate no parking at all. And so the parking is a variance associated with this application that if this application does not get approved, there will be no parking on-site at all. You can't do parking on this site at all without the variance here. The rear yard variance is six feet in excess of what they should be doing. They're doing 21, and they should be 28, okay, seven feet, actually, sorry. So there is that. However, that setback is actually the setback to the north. You'll see the silver building. That is their setback, that they're meeting. The landscaping setback, the testimony that was given regarding that, planning staff has no issue with that. There are two new street trees that will be added and some green roofing and improvements to stormwater and drainage on-site that will ameliorate actually many of the existing conditions we have on the site that have pooling water and whatnot. So planning staff is satisfied with the testimony given by their professional planner and their team regarding the variances. We don't believe it would have a negative impact on the zone plan, the intent of the plan or the master plan. And planning staff would recommend approval with the conditions set on record. But I guess the only other thing that I think is worth noting is that this alley, of course, was designed for horse carriages and horses and all these homes. You know, if you look at the aerials and you go back there, all those sheds in the backyard were for horses. So the driving is really, really narrow. And that's, again, that's why the best practices for traffic do them as slanted as they were. But, you know, motorists can navigate it. It can be done. It's not ideal, but it can be done. So unless the board has any other questions, that concludes planning staff testimony.
Thank you, Cam. Could you go into depth a little more on the fact that there's no parking permitted on this site? And that's the, that's one of the variances being sought?
Yeah, so when they do the as-of-right application here, which is to develop the two lots separately, they would have to meet the 28-foot required rear yard setback. Again, they're doing 21. And that would all be landscaped area. Parking would not be permitted, period. And they could do four units, get the same exact density as the building that they're proposing now, but parking, again, would not be permitted. Yeah, I'm not sure if there's any other way I could say that.
Cam, just to clarify that for purposes of the public. We have two separate lots being consolidated to construct one structure.
Correct, yeah.
That one structure is proposed to house eight units.
Correct.
If it was constructed as two separate buildings of four units each, you would still get eight units. But in that scenario, no parking is required. As a matter of fact, no parking is permitted.
Correct. And it would be as-of-right, and they would go to the zoning department to pull permits, and they wouldn't even come to this board.
And with respect to the rear yard setback, they're deficient seven feet. But of course, that seven feet doesn't provide the ability to park two additional cars. that seven feet doesn't provide the ability to park two additional cars on the spot or on the lot, correct?
Correct. And that is what their neighbor to the north has.
So counsel, my question would be is to the public speaker is if his argument is correct, that your client was looking to maximize living space density and capital gain, then if you had built four units and four units without the parking, you would have realized the greater density rate?
If it was two separate buildings, it would be the same, same exact density. It would be four units. It's just that they're consolidated, and the lots are of a certain width when they're consolidated, that it's based on the bedroom count.
So I guess the question is, is why did you, or why did your client decide to go with one building and take on the burden of proposing or being told to use, to come up with two parking spaces and then pull the application from the last meeting and now back with four?
Yeah. So the change with parking is solely due to the back and forth between requests of traffic engineering and then coming here and finding that the board preferred a different layout, so we changed to accommodate that. Why my client opted to do one consolidated lot with one development over two, I can't really say. I think he likes the design of this building, that the architect prepared, and is very happy with that, so wanted to stick with that plan instead of doing the honestly easier application of doing two separate as-of-right projects. Yeah.
Well, and to be clear, counsel, that wouldn't even require going to any board. You would go to the building department, you'd pull permits, and the net result in terms of the public that's concerned about onsite parking is no parking, eight units, no parking, probably the same impact in size of structure without any parking. So that's permitted under this zoning.
Yeah. I can note very briefly to the rear yard setback, I heard some discussion of that, too. I know the tax assessor routinely allows you to consider, when there's these rear alleyways, five feet of that as part of your lot, too. So our notice, which is a seven-foot rear yard setback, the requesting is somewhat conservative. You could theoretically make the argument that it's two feet, but we did notice for the greater variance to be conservative in this situation.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. There's nothing else. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P23-075 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I think the variance being asked for is de minimis in this situation. I think we're actually providing parking. And so I hear Mr. Trunkali, I believe, who came up. And thank you for coming out and speaking, but I do believe that this is an approvable project, so I say aye.
Commissioner Gangdon?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming back and take the advice of the board in regards to the parking. I really feel that the variances requested meets the objective and the goals of the master plan, so aye.
Commissioner Prince, Councilwoman Prince, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Yeah, so in reading everything, I mean, I follow our great planning staff, and they were recommending it. And I think if your client was guided by Allen Feld, who is a great architect, and he presented this as an option, who am I to say no? I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I agree with the other commissioners. I think the variances sought are well within reason. I do think it has no detriment to the zone plan or the master plan of the city, so, and thank you for coming back with the four spots. I'm impressed that you made them angled and that they weren't just straight in. So with that, I vote aye.
Motion carries. All in favor with conditions.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to item 10. It's case P2023-0044 is a preliminary and final major site plan for 35 Fairview Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, good to see everybody. As always, I'll be here for quite some time this evening, so I look forward to a good night ahead.
So will we.
We know the feeling.
The application before you this evening is, first, is for 35 Fairview Avenue. That's Block 16703, Lot 9, and we are located in Zone 1, or the neighborhood mixed-use zone of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. Again, for the record, the property address is 35 Fairview Avenue. And also, for the record, Benjamin Wine of Prime &amp; Tuvell, on behalf of the applicant, 35 Fairview Ave, LLC. So this property currently consists of a two-story building with two residential units currently on the property, and it's largely surrounded by varying residential uses with a little bit of a smattering of some commercial and other mixed uses as well. This does include, for the record, immediately adjacent next door to the west is a 10-story, 92-unit development that has already been approved and constructed, of which 50 of the 92 units, I believe, are affordable housing, and I'm sure this board may or may not recall that application from a couple of years ago. We're here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a new four-story building that will consist of 15 residential units and eight bicycle parking spaces, along with some landscaping, lighting, and stormwater management improvements. The development does comply with all of the zoning and redevelopment plan requirements prescribed by the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan, and I will note as well that as part of the redevelopment plan requirement, and also just good practice, we did meet with the, it was the Jackson Hill Main Street Neighborhood Association on February 1st of this year to present our project. We held that meeting at the Moore's Lounge, and I would say it was fairly well-attended, including by Councilman Gilmore. Despite, again, being variance-free, we did discuss the plan in detail. There were several questions that came up, and we did our best to respond to those questions. We do feel that this proposal will promote the objectives of this redevelopment plan, which hopefully you'll hear about in detail this evening. And I would just lastly indicate that we did receive both the staff report from Mr. Beasley, as well as the engineering report from Ms. Wang, and we take no issue complying with all of the comments contained in both of those reports. So unless you have any questions, and me, I do intend to proceed with just one witness this evening. That's our project architect, Jeff Lewis, who will be speaking on behalf of the development. And so I'm happy to move straight along with Mr. Lewis.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Counsel, do you have your notice?
I do. Sworn in, Mr. Lewis?
Chairman, I had received the notice. I had received the notice electronically, obviously, prior to tonight's meeting. This does appear to be the same notice that I had the opportunity to review before the meeting. It is the original. It does appear to be in order, and we're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
All right. Thank you, counsel. And let's get Mr. Lewis sworn in.
Yes, I do. Jeffrey Lewis, J-F-F-R-E-Y-L-E-W-I-S.
Mr. Lewis, good evening. We've qualified you numerous times in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
All right, Jeff, you can go right ahead.
Okay. So 35 Fairview Avenue, this is an oversized lot. It's 31 feet wide by 100 feet deep. We're on Fairview Avenue, right near Monticello Avenue. This is an as-of-right building. We're proposing a four-story, 15-unit building, which breaks down as six studio apartments, five one-bedroom apartments, and four two-bedroom apartments. Looking at the drawings to the right, I want to start with the site plan. There is an existing street tree that we're going to be keeping and building a new tree pit for. Looking to the building itself, we are built at the front property line. We're also built up to both side property lines. However, we do have a fairly large light well along the left side of the building. We're using this space as a yard for one of the ground-floor apartments, and also we do have a stormwater management system here, and the detention tank is located beneath the grass here. We also have a small five-foot-deep rear yard. This is also a private yard for a ground-floor apartment, and this is enclosed with a six-foot-high wood fence. Moving to the floor plans, I want to start with the first floor plan at the top. Fairview Avenue is on the right of these drawings. So there are two main entrances to the building, starting at the top. The first entrance goes directly to stair number two, to the second floor. The second door is our main entrance. It leads to that main lobby, which provides access to our mail area, all of our meter rooms, our sprinkler room, as this will be a fully sprinkled building. The main staircase, in the back, we have bicycle storage for eight bicycles, as well as a trash and recycling room, which has an exhaust fan venting to the backyard. The rest of this building is residential. All the apartments in the building have washer-dryer in the unit, and we are providing air conditioning and heat with heat pumps with wall-mounted mini-sputs. Coming back to the first, coming back to the first floor, we have three apartments on this floor. There are two one-bedroom apartments and one two-bedroom apartment. All these three apartments are ADA adaptable, excuse me. There's one apartment in the front here, a central apartment here, which, as I mentioned, has direct access to the side yard. There's also an alley here with a door at the front, which provides emergency escape from the side yard out to the front of the building. And then lastly, we have this rear two-bedroom apartment, which, as I mentioned, has direct access to the private backyard. Looking below at the second floor, we do have four total apartments on this floor. There are two studios, which are in the front of the building, and these both have Juliet balconies facing the street. There's, again, a central one-bedroom apartment facing the light well, which also has a Juliet balcony. And then in the back, we have our rear two-bedroom apartment, and this has a 272-square-foot roof terrace. Moving on to the third floor on the top here, this is relatively the same as the second floor. The only difference is in the back apartment, where we don't have that roof terrace anymore, but we have a 15-foot-wide balcony. And then, again, moving on to the fourth floor, this is, again, the same as the third floor with one small exception, which is that the two rear apartments, the one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartment, each have an internal staircase, which is going directly up to the roof to their private roof decks. And so I'm just going to go right to that roof deck plan. That's here. So we have, at the back, a 700-square-foot roof deck, which is dedicated to the two-bedroom apartment in the rear, and then a 775-square-foot roof deck, which is dedicated to the one-bedroom apartment below. We also have our condensers up here, and the first roof deck is set back 10 feet from the front of the building, and we're using this space to provide 296 square feet of green roof trays. Looking at the building elevations, I'm going to start at the front elevation on the left. The main building finish is a smooth beige brick. We have a wood cornice at the top, which is wrapped in slate gray metal panels. The Juliet balconies are all black aluminum railings. We have black aluminum-framed doors and windows, and we're using white metal panels as accents in the center of the building on the upper floors. Sliding over to the rear elevation on the right here, the main finish is a gray vinyl siding. We have, again, black aluminum railings, black frames for our doors and windows. And then on both elevations, you can see the stair bulkhead, which is set back from both elevations, and that's finished in a colonial white vinyl siding, so it's a little lighter. This is the left side elevation. There's not too much to see here. This is the same finish as the rear elevation, gray vinyl siding, and same doors, windows, and railings as on the front and rear elevations.
Jeff, that's the, that's the light well that you referred to on the site plan?
Correct. This is the light well in the center here. And then lastly, this is the right side. This is located right on the property line, and will just be vinyl siding. That concludes our presentation. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anybody? Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
Chairman, that really does conclude my presentation. I know Mr. Lewis did talk about the stormwater improvements. The rest of the civil engineering plans do speak for themselves, but being that we do not have any variances associated with the application, that would conclude my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Is there anybody here from public that wants to comment on this application? Anybody from public?
Seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Eric, anything you want to add?
I don't have too much to add. Staff did determine that this is an as-of-right project, as the applicant stated. Also, staff found that this project aligns with a lot of the objectives in the redevelopment plan. And with that being said, staff recommends approval, with conditions, of course.
Which are acceptable to the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve case P2023-0044 as presented to our board here tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Prince, R.A.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Chairman Langston?
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor?
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. All right. Let's move on to item 12. It's case P2023-0062. It's a site plan amendment with variances for 44 to 46 Newkirk Street. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Before we proceed to item 11, I'd just like to quickly repeat to item 11 on here, which has P2023-0086, 516 Tunnelley Avenue. I actually was recently retained as counsel for this applicant. Mr. Black put on the record that it was carried with preservation of notice. Because I was just retained on Thursday, I discovered in reviewing their notices that notice was actually deficient. This is located on Tunnelley Avenue, which is Route 1 and 9. It is arguably also on the county road, as the jug handle concludes the county road. Neither the county nor DOT were noticed for the application, so obviously jurisdiction wouldn't be proper before the board, so we will have to renotice for this application. I also just recently received some comments from traffic last evening. The original plans didn't get to traffic originally. So we will renotice. I know Mr. Black put on the record that it would be for June 11th. Obviously, because I'm coming in now, my applicant asked if I could try and get that earlier. That's up to the board's discretion, so I would just put it before the board to hopefully carry this to a different date that I could notice for in May.
So Chairman, since the application has to be renoticed, it's not being carried. It's being adjourned and renoticed for a new date. Presumably, anybody that was here would get a copy of that notice. I am slightly concerned, obviously, that it was announced for the date of June 11th. So with that, obviously, it's in the board's discretion, Chairman.
Okay. Cam, I'll...
I mean...
Or anything you want to say?
I understand why you have to ask, but we absolutely cannot accommodate it. June 11th is the earliest we can do.
Okay.
Yeah. May 7th is like double-booked. May 21st is triple-booked. So June 11th is really all we can do.
Okay. There's your answer, counsel.
Can't get if you don't ask.
Okay. So once again, for the record, case P2023-0086 is a conditional use with preliminary and final major site plan has been adjourned, and the public will be noticed. Okay. So counsel, let's talk about...
Chairman, just one point, counsel. So if this is a county road, would you not also have to appear before the county planning board?
We would. Generally, our practice has been to get approval from this board and then also apply to the county. It's up to them whether they actually want to hear the application or not. We'll make a jurisdictional request from them when we make that application, but that will obviously be part of my next filing, and it will be done probably even before I'm back before this board.
Okay. So let's talk about case P2023-0062, is the site plan amendment with variances for 44 to 46 Newkirk Street.
Okay. Again, for the record, Tom Lean of Connell Foley. The board is very familiar with this application. It was originally approved back in 2018. Went through a number of extensions. At the time it was approved, it was under the Zone 4 neighborhood district within the Journal Square redevelopment plan. It has been amended to Zone 4A since that time.
It has been amended to Zone 4A since that time. It does not significantly change the actual zoning for the site, because it is subject to the corner bonus. So there are some small nuances, but the, ultimately, the zoning is not very much affected. However, because it was approved, while Zone 4 was the underlying zoning, it still remains subject to the Zone 4 zoning requirements. It was also approved as a 13, well, a 12-story building with a mezzanine back then. Our code has since changed, and all mezzanines are counted as floors now, so that would have been a 13-story building, which would not have been permitted by this board. So we did come back. We did amend it as a 12-story building. That obviously resulted in some changes to the floor plates, and under case P-22052, this board did amend some changes to that plan. We're back again with what we're hoping is a more modern, more efficient building. It is a 200-unit building, up from 167, that does not constitute a new application. It can still be treated as amendment. There was also 14 parking spaces previously approved as part of this plan. We've removed those parking spaces and removed the proposed curb cut. We've turned that space into amenity space, amenity space that was previously on the mezzanine floor that was approved by this floor, board. So ultimately, we believe this is a more efficient building. There were some deviations that were previously approved by the board. The bulk of the building hasn't changed, so those deviations haven't changed. However, there are two new deviations we're asking for tonight. They are more because of planning's due diligence in reviewing the redevelopment plan and taking a much deeper look at the proposal. There are some things that we might have missed, didn't consider the first time. They are deviations. There are things we have to ask for, but ultimately, the building as approved is the building, bulk-wise, that the board has already approved. So with that, I'm going to have Mr. Vandermark come up, our architect, and he's going to walk you through the changes. And I do have my engineer and professional planner, Mr. Height, here to, to go through those deviations.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Council.
Council, do you have your notice?
I do.
Okay. And I just want to use this as an opportunity to say that 40 Lembeck is not being heard tonight. It is carried to the May 7th meeting. 40 Lembeck is not being heard tonight. Okay. Just wanted to double-check.
Chairman, for purposes of the record, I've had the opportunity to review the affidavit and notice proof of publication with respect to the matter here this evening. It does appear to be in order. We're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Okay. Thank you, Council.
Do I have testimony to give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Have the record?
Sure. That is Anthony C. Vandermark Jr.
Mr. Vandermark, good evening.
Good evening, Chair.
We've qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current tonight?
It is current tonight.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Great. Thank you. This evening, we're here, as Mr. Lean had stated, for an amendment to a previously approved site plan here at 46 Newkirk Avenue. What we are here for, highlighted in yellow, again, as previously stated, we have an approval that was dated back on 5/9/23, and we're here tonight on 4/16/24. Side area remains exactly the same. 12 stories at 130 feet, which is permitted in the neighborhood, mixed-use Zone 4 zone with the corner lot bonus A, so 130 feet is compliant, and was previously approved. One of the major differences here are the residential unit density change. Previously, application was at 167 units. As you can see now, we are at 200 units. The number of studios have changed from 84 to 113, from 76 one-bedrooms to 83 one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms to zero two-bedrooms, and a compliant for three bedrooms, which is 2%, and as needed by the 2060 redevelopment plan. Previous application had a corner retail space that wrapped through to Baldwin Avenue. That remains the same. We have moved the wall in, in the rear yard just slightly, to accommodate some outdoor space behind the proposed amenity on the first floor. Previous application at 167 units had 14 units. They have since now been removed, so we have proposing zero parking spaces, which is still compliant with the redevelopment plan, in place of the 14 parking spaces, a 2,960-square-foot amenity area. Bicycle parking slightly changed. The interior spaces were moved around slightly, and I'll get into that in a minute. We are at a compliant 100 bicycle parking spaces with eight outdoor. We have previously approved a pool and a rooftop amenity with green roof and stormwater detention. That all remains as part of this application. We have a slight change to the building exterior on the, at the base of the building. Ownership had requested that we kind of soften a little bit of the design, and I'll get into that from the renderings. I don't know how much the board wants me to get into as far as the location of the project, but again, it's a 15,850-square-foot site that's located at the northwest corner of Baldwin Avenue and Newkirk Street. Pre-existing conditions, we have a, you know, a masonry three-story structure adjacent to the west. The site is cleared partially at the properties on Newkirk. And the corner property, and as you work down towards Baldwin, as you can see, there's a two-story, and then the last slide here is those three-story, very narrow wood-frame residential structures. So they still remained. The first four plus the corner are to be removed as part of this application.
Mr. Vandermark, maybe, since we've had so many amendments to this plan already, why don't we just stick to the, the latest changes that are...
I appreciate that. Thank you, Chair.
...for review tonight?
It's like we hear this application once a year, Council. As a matter of fact, you have, almost to the date.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. First floor plan, highlighted in red is really the, the changes to the first floor here. I will show you the previous application drawing the rear of the property to the northern portion. Again, had 14 parking spaces. We had a curb cut on Newkirk, went directly up slope to the parking area. As part of the new application, we have before you, highlighted in red, that curb cut and drywall is replaced by pedestrian passage, interior bicycle parking spaces, and as you can see in yellow, a 2,900-square-foot amenity space. We have a 1,410-square-foot outdoor permeable patio area. As you can see, the, the site planning, other than the removal of the curb cut, remains exactly the same. As part of this application, we agree to comply with both the transportation comments and as well as city engineering comments. We are proposing a loading zone on Baldwin Avenue, new pedestrian ADA ramp at the corner, and we are adding one parking space again to Newkirk Street. That's the basis of the change at the first floor. From rendering standpoint, the previous application has a series of piers with large glazing openings. The ownership interior design consultant had requested that we add these columns to the outside piers, so that is added to this application that wasn't in the previous application as far as color palette and the masonry material remains the same. However, the openings, the window opening slightly changed, and ownership requested that we add these columns to the lower part of the facade. The floor plans, again, footprint is exactly the same. The unit counts slightly changed when you go from 167 to 200. I don't know if the board wants me to walk them through every floor plan, but it's predominantly studios and one-bedrooms, with again, four three-bedroom units that are located on the upper floors in blue here on the corner. Working up to the roof, we have a large amount of extensive green roof area at 2,119 square feet. On the upper bulkhead roof, 1,980. And as part of the original application, this project had a pool at 702 square feet that was facing due east. That's the majority of the changes here. We just, we had some first floor changes and a little bit of juggling around as far as the lower part of the facade. But again, it remains pretty much the same, you know, building and site plan as previously approved.
Thank you. I do have Ms. Galvin here. However, Mr. Vandermark testified he did receive both comments from engineering and comments from traffic and engineering, and obviously, we can comply with those, so I'm not sure her testimony is necessary. Other than that, I have Mr. Height to come up and just go through the two new deviations we noticed for.
Okay. Maybe we'll get some questions out to Mr. Vandermark first, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Vandermark, the, the only question I do have is the material on those columns.
Yep.
You've mentioned masonry. Is it solid masonry, or is it a masonry cover over foam? Or...
I, I, I mentioned...
Dirty word, ephes, that I don't want to say out loud.
Heaven forbid. No, it would not be an ephes material. It, it would be, it would be a half columned cast iron material.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions? Mr. Vandermark?
No.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I apologize for jumping the gun there, Chairman.
No worries. No worries.
I'll have Mr. Height come on. Do you want this?
No.
No?
Okay.
Okay. I do. Yes, Charles Height. Last name is spelled H-E-Y-D-T.
Mr. Height, always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight?
Still current. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. You're qualified.
Mr. Height, we previously had some deviations that were approved by this board. Those have not changed. They believe they related to what would have been considered the rear yard at the time that we had the approval originally back in 2018. I know some of those definitions have changed, but the bulk of the building has not changed. The two new deviations that we realized we should have asked for since the beginning relate to the height of our bulkheads and the setbacks that are required to allow for windows on our facades facing both north and to the west. Could you just briefly walk the board through what those are, why maybe we didn't consider on them the first time, and why we still feel that the bulk of the building is appropriate?
Yes. So just to tackle the first reference to the rooftop element, the technical reading in the Journal Square plan is respect to floor-to-ceiling of the rooftop structure. We are now including the staircase and elevator bulkhead within that framework. The permitted maximum is 10 feet. As we worked with and confirmed with Matt De Silva, most elevator and staircase bulkheads need to exceed the 10 feet max, just to be constructed for floor clearance for the mechanical unit of the elevator and, and the ceiling height for the staircase. The remaining level of that amenity space will still be 10 feet, as was previously proposed and, and currently proposed. So for all intents and purposes, we comply, but for the new understanding and the inclusive reading of that language in the redevelopment, in the redevelopment plan. So that's up at the roof. With respect to the side yards, again, no change in the footprint of the building. The corner lot bonus, as it, it reads and apply, is applied to this application, does require a five-foot side yard setback for all stories above the adjacent structures. That's a mouthful. We did accomplish that for a majority of the upper floors, but for the first 28 feet along Newkirk, along the side yard, and in the first 42 feet along Baldwin, we actually have a zero front, a side yard setback. That's common in planning practice to provide a lot line setback for a building of this nature, a modern building, the, the architecture, design of it. We are proposing to keep that part of this project, so we are not amending it to comply. We did also confirm that part of the design was to not only allow for light and air for where we do setback this building, for the remaining section of the setback, but also to respect the adjacent property. So we do have two, three-story structures immediately adjacent, one on Newkirk, one on Baldwin. The property on Newkirk does have a, a, a window on that shared side yard. We are respecting that with the five-foot setback, but closer to the street, as you, as you move closer to the street, that's where we, we have the zero-foot setback. So the impact there, to, to, in my opinion, is being addressed with respecting the five-foot setback at that point. Along Baldwin, there are no lot line windows. We are respecting building code, light, air, with respect to our proposed structure, as well as with respect to the adjacent structure. So that's the side yard setback. I still maintain, based on our review and, and the fact that even though the zone did change from Zone 4 to 4A, the corner lot bonus has always been in play, so I think the intent of what's being proposed is fully consistent, notwithstanding catching up on these two deviations based on the current review. So I do think that we, for the purposes of the redevelopment plan, we don't have any substantial impairment or detriment to the redevelopment plan or the, the zone plan or master plan. We also, by virtue of accounting for that light and air to the adjacent property, I think we're mitigating any substantial impact to the adjacent properties. This is a corner lot bonus development. It is a tall structure. We are adjacent to three-story structures. This is somewhat not uncommon in Journal Square as things develop over time, but I think we're, we're not posing any substantial detriment, notwithstanding that this is a redevelopment area. That's my direct testimony. I don't know if there's any other questions.
The only other thing I would say is, in speaking with Mr. De Silva, we did agree that those facades that are against the lot lines, we would have a decorative element along them, so they don't read as flat facades with no, just blank walls that just ascend all the way to the top of the building. So that's sort of the give-back to, to alleviate that lot line.
That's, thank you very much. That's the same condition with the rooftop element with the bulkheads. It'll be cladded with similar materials as the, the rooftop facades.
Okay. Understood. Thank you, Mr. Height. Yeah, I have no questions. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, is that your presentation?
That is our presentation. I have nothing further.
Okay. Thank you. And we will reserve the right to call Ms. Galvin if... Thank you for coming, but it, you're here if we need you. So at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Mr. Chair, motion to close?
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, before you jump in, I do want to address the elevator bulkhead heights in Journal Square. Just to throw it out there, is this something we should be looking at changing multiple redevelopment plans on? Rather than having each applicant ask for that variance when it's a, you know, specifically a mechanical issue?
So the clause is only in the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. You know, staff has informally looked at this requirement and believe that it isn't compatible with modern elevator shafts and, you know, you know, talking about the broader math, it's perhaps something that the board should look at amending. Staff would be happy to assist the board in studying that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then whatever comments you have.
Certainly. So staff provided a memo to the board and the applicant dated 4/5/2024. In the memo, it outlined seven conditions. Does the applicant agree to all conditions in the memo?
Yes, we have.
Great. I want to highlight just specifically, so the language that Mr. Height alluded to in corner lot bonus A states, "All floor levels above the height of adjacent buildings shall be set back from the property line five feet or more to provide windows," which, you know, reveals an ostensible planning purpose for this regulation. It's principally about avoiding large unsightly blank walls. The nature of the corner bonus is that it really only applies to that particular parcel, and as such, by the nature, part of buildings developed using the corner bonus will be substantially taller than the buildings around it, presumably in perpetuity. And so in other parts of Journal Square, when we have this case of a large building gets developed next to short buildings, and there's a blank wall, the adjacent buildings usually also have development rights to build a building of similar bulk, and those blank walls will eventually be covered up. That is not the case in the corner bonus zone. Therefore, to alleviate, you know, any negative impact and, you know... That is not the case in the corner bonus zone. Therefore, to alleviate, you know, any negative impact and, you know, preserve the purpose of this clause to avoid unsightly blank walls that will be visible long-term. A condition, as a condition, as Mr. Lean mentioned, we want to see design elements that echo a fenestration pattern or otherwise provide an element or color of geometric articulation in order to provide an attractive appearance and comply with the intent of zoning. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P-2023-0062 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded for approval. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, let's get it built. What, aye?
Commissioner Lipsky.
I'll wave at that word, and I welcome it. Aye.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner, Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
And Chair Langston.
Yeah, I agree with the changes. I don't think there's any detriment to the zone plan, the redevelopment plan, or the master plan of the city, so my vote is aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Mike, do you want to take your break now? Okay.
It's going to hurt you.
Call mine. Call mine. Santo, I'm calling you by your dad's name, God. Where did you get the food?
You're a Rangers, okay.
Up on West Side.
It was like Fight Night.
That's San Maria Coano.
Stagman?
Arct Fulton.
Palermo?
Oh, Palermo.
Palermo. 420 West Side. Right...
Can we come to order again, everybody, please?
It's good, man.
It's good.
And let's call item 13. It's case P-2023-0023. It's a preliminary and final major site plan for 30 and 40 Newport Parkway. Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, everyone. Lisa LaMelo from Murphy, Schiller &amp; Wilks, on behalf of the applicant. Applicant is NC Housing Associates Number 200. It is for construction of a lobby which will act as amenity space between the existing towers at 30 and 40 Newport. There are no variances associated with this application. The property is in the Newport redevelopment plan and the residential area of the Newport redevelopment plan. Tonight, we will hear from our civil engineer, Mr. Matt Newls. We will hear from our architect, Bauer Dermel Planning from Charles Height. And we have tonight Mr. Giovanni Diaz, who is our landscape architect, who's had his questions from the board, although we're not planning to present him in our direct. If the board has any preliminaries, we'll call Mr. Newls as our civil engineer.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Chairman, just before we get Mr. Newls sworn in, I have had the opportunity to review the affidavit of publication proof of mailing. It does appear to be in order. I didn't get through all 600 of the green cards, but they all are here. The market is A1 for the record.
There was certainly quite a few.
Okay. Let's call Mr. Newls then. Thank you.
Hello? Sure. It's Matthew Newls, N-E-U-L-S.
Mr. Newls, good evening. Is your license current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Newls, can you... I don't know if this one's on as well. Can you tell us your association with this project?
Sure. I work with the firm of Drosner-Robin, and we were contracted to prepare the site plans, the site civil plans for this project, and those plans were prepared by my team under my supervision.
And do you describe to the board the civil engineering associated with this project?
Sure. I'm going to try to plug my computer in. Hopefully, that works out. I think I...
That sounded, that was a good sound.
It made the sound, but it didn't do it.
He's got to do it.
There we go. Okay. Yeah, so I'll start with a cover sheet of the plans that were presented. I'm going to zoom in here, hopefully, and just give everyone the benefit of the location of the site. The site is located on the north side of Newport Parkway, near its intersection with Washington Boulevard. So, it's on the east side of Washington Boulevard, north side of Newport Parkway. North Boulevard is to the east of the site. So, it's located here, very close to the intersection of Newport Parkway and Washington Boulevard. I'm going to zoom back out here. Just move into the next page. Here we go. So, basically, just to give a quick walk around the site, what currently exists today is the Thomas Jefferson Apartment Building, 30 Newport Parkway, and the James Madison Building at 40 Newport Parkway. They're kind of these two buildings that are outlined here that look like, kind of like an H shape a little bit. And the proposed project includes the development of a one-story lobby building, which will be described by the architect. But it's located here, which is kind of in the westerly or the northerly portion of what's an existing parking and circulation area. That's kind of between the two buildings. It'll have access to the two buildings and kind of connect them. And so, what we've done is we've reduced the size of the parking and access area, basically cut it in half to have an adequately sized parking and circulation area here. We've rearranged the parking to provide a little bit of additional parking, but really have the parking more organized and more efficient, where we have perpendicular parking spaces around it. We'll have a drop-off area here in front of the new entryway, which will be denoted by some textured pavement. And again, it'll be some short-term parking right around that. The driveway will remain in the same location off of Newport Parkway, and there'll be some improvements here along the property line along Washington Boulevard as well. Additionally, the project does involve some amenity outside, outside amenity improvements here along Newport Parkway on the property that really were just recreational type amenities, not new pavement. So, just, I will zoom down. We have, for the purposes of the application, shown some truck turning and circulation templates through the area just to show that basic box trucks, certainly regular motor vehicles, can easily circulate through the new access area and back out onto Newport Parkway. No problem there. And then, we are providing some permeable pavement to help the project and help meet some of the green stormwater requirements in the city. So, we have permeable pavement under some of the parking spaces. We're pointing to here, also here on the east side, here, and then a strip along the west side of the property. So, we have that. There will be some green rooftop on the proposed building. That'll be described in further detail. But that also helps to really convert an area of vehicle surface into some green rooftop and then some permeable pavement, where we do have some regular pavement left, but I think it's a good improvement in terms of water quality benefit for the project. We did prepare a stormwater management report, did some stormwater calculations to show that the amount of stormwater from the site is actually less, and there'll be no impact on the city sewer system as well. We have added some stormwater piping to convey the water from different parts of the site to the existing sewer system out here to the north and west side of the property. That is, it's a pretty straightforward application from an engineering standpoint. I think that concludes my sort of summary of the project.
And I will defer any additional questions to the board.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. And correct me if I'm jumping ahead of the application here. Mr. Newls, have you read the November 22 of 23 Traffic Engineering memo from the Department of Infrastructure?
And I'll just...
That can be addressed later.
And I'll just address those comments. We did have a discussion, and we did meet with the Traffic Engineering Department. The project is a, it's an as-of-right planning board project with no variance associated with it. Therefore, the request for off-site improvements, we discussed with the engineering department, Traffic Engineering Department, and they agreed that although we would collaborate potentially, the applicant would collaborate in the future as part of this application, the improvements suggested were no longer being suggested.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. That was it for me. Anybody else from Mr. Newls? All right. Thank you, sir.
Want to do members of the public now?
No, no. Let's hear your entire panel.
So, our next up is our architect, Mr. Bauer Dermel. Bauer Dermel, architect.
First name Bauer, B-A-U-E-R, last name Dermel, D-E-R-M-E-L.
Mr. Dermel, good evening. I believe we've qualified you in the past, correct?
No, you haven't.
You haven't? Okay. If you could just go through your background a little bit and your licensing.
I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey.
Okay. And that license is current tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. You're qualified.
Mr. Dermel, you, I don't know if you want to bring up your plans. I can't help you.
That is...
Oh, that's your plan? Okay. All right. Sorry.
Have you flipped through the pages?
So, my apologies. Help has to be helpful, and I was not. Okay. So, Mr. Dermel, you're the architect associated with the project, correct? Okay. Can you take the board through the design of the one-story lobby space?
It's a single-story building, about 10,400 square feet, and the height of the building is 12 feet. Interior height is about 10 feet. This is a detailed layout. You have two revolving doors entries. You have a central lobby, a small library on the side. These are all amenities that are desperately needed, and we're connecting this lobby with existing buildings through these hallways. And they are all ADA compliant hallways with the ramp and steps. The building itself is a one-story building, all glass, steel construction, and slab-on-grade. Should I go to the roof?
Sure. I don't know if you want to describe the type of amenities that will be in the lobby space.
Yes. Amenities, as you can see on the plan, we have a playroom for kids, a lounge, TV area, business center, package room, a gym, and activity center.
And ultimately, the lobby and amenity space provides connectivity between the two towers, so now they will exist as one.
Correct. This is an existing tower here, an existing tower here, and they're connected through the lobby with these hallways.
And if you want to go to the green roof?
This is the green roof plan. It's about the same size of the building itself. It's not for public access. It's just a green roof.
And just to be clear, there's no, nobody would be walking on this surface, so that it might look like there's some pathways on the...
That's just decorative.
Yeah. Okay.
This is an elevation of a single-story structure. North, west, east, some details. The building itself is glass, storefront molyan metal, and some sample material colors. This is planters for the green roof, and the storefront, a sample of the storefront. a sample of the storefront. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, and, and, uh, I will defer any questions of the architect to the board.
Okay, thank you, counsel. I just have one question on the green roof. How is that accessible? Obviously, there's going to be, you know, maintenance workers up there.
Yes. Um, let me go back to the floor plan. The lobbies on both sides of, of this building are two-story lobbies. So there won't be any interior access. We'll have to provide an exterior access to the roof, which will be done once we start developing the plan further.
Okay, so it's just essentially going to be an extension ladder? Against the walls that we're talking about?
You mean portable extension ladder?
Yeah, how, so all those plantings up there-
Right.
Have to be maintained, correct?
Right.
How do they get maintained?
We'll, we'll, we'll provide an exterior access through stair, an exterior stair that may be just a three, four-feet-wide straight run. Where, um, to answer your question, we're not, we haven't gone that far into the design of this, this roof.
So, sir, let me help you out. If we're not proposing access, how would they access it?
No, we, we are proposing access. We, we will. We will have it.
Your plan does not show access, right, sir?
That, that is correct.
So right now, in order to maintain it, they would have to use a portable ladder or some kind of ladder to get up on a 12-foot roof?
That is correct.
Okay, but your testimony is, as we further design, if it's approved, you're going to look to put some kind of stair-
Correct.
To allow that access.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and as part of the, as part of the final submission of residential compliance plans that will, will be on that, uh, plans, should, should the application be approved?
Well, that shouldn't be seen by the board. That's only seen by me for signature.
That's, that's correct.
So the board would have no say in it at that point?
Yeah, and, and certainly we'll, we'll work with the, you know, engineer and the planning department to, you know, make sure that there's a safe access. I think, uh, if I understand the architect's testimony correctly, it's not going to be a portable ladder. There'd be some sort of fixed ladder to get up and off the roof for the maintenance personnel.
Uh, again, if, if I don't see it, it doesn't exist.
Sure.
And I don't know if that would require you to come back for an amended, obviously, plan. I don't know if it would trigger some kind of relief, so, I believe that's part of the, the concern. We don't know where it would be and, and what it would look like, so.
And my concern is also that it's secure and members of the public don't access it.
Understood. I mean, if it's not on the plan and it's not, um, you know, the board doesn't have an aversion to, you know, extension ladders being used. I mean, they're, it's accessible, uh, by maintenance personnel. I mean, you, you know, truly, whether it's a scissor lift or a man lift or, you know, portable, it's not unheard of to, to be on top of a 12-story roof without actual stair access. It's really to the comfort level of the board as to whether the, any maintenance personnel that have to go up there, maintain the, the top of the roof, uh, are safe in doing so.
Counsel, I don't disagree with that. We just want your client to be aware, obviously, if you can't just locate a staircase.
That is understood. Absolutely.
That would be the issue is, that would probably trigger you coming back here for some kind of an amendment. So, right now, access will have to be through some kind of a portable ladder to get up there and maintain it. And then, you know, you can't just add it, obviously, for signature set or when you're pulling a permit. That would wind up having to come back here, I would imagine. I don't know, because I don't know what it would look like, but.
That, that's, that's the problem is, you know, without seeing it, we don't know what it looks like. And we obviously can't change the plans that are approved tonight versus the signature plans that I sign.
That, that, that's understood. I mean, the applicant will agree then to, you know, use whatever, scissor lift or, or man lift type system to get any materials or, and personnel up on the roof safely.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, our next witness is our planner, Mr. Charles Height.
Hi, good evening.
And Mr. Height, just for the record, you've been sworn in tonight and still, uh, you're qualified and are still under oath.
Yes, duly noted.
Thank you.
So I'll jump into it. We do typically do a consistency review, even though we're not requesting any formal deviations with applications. The Newport Redevelopment Plan Act, uh, Redevelopment Plan is very active in terms of implementation. This board may recall about a year ago, we did propose an amendment to the Redevelopment Plan that had a zone, a boundary change. This application was actually submitted prior to that amendment. So going a little bit back in time again with this application, we did walk through all the permitted uses. Obviously, the, uh, structure is, uh, a common accessory use. It is attached to the two towers with the covered walkway. That's one of the zoning aspects that we're actually bringing the overall property into compliance with, having one principal structure on a lot. It's referenced in the LDO as a requirement, so we are complying with that requirement with this application. In terms of, of, of permitted uses, where we are permitted residential use in the residential district. In terms of density, the plan that's applicable permits 200 units per acre. This application is approximately 87 units per acre. So throughout all the residential district then and now, it's substantially underdeveloped in terms of overall unit count. The open space by virtue of the walkways and, and increase in surrounding area have increased approximately 4% on this property. But the overall, uh, open space on the overall re, um, this residential district is approximately 40%, where the requirement's 10%. Again, a substantial amount of open space existing. That's really the, uh, main points I wanted to, to cover with the board. We are furthering purposes of the Redevelopment Plan, providing open green space and active, uh, active park area. These, obviously, this amenity space will provide some, some areas for the residents. I didn't mean to do that. But, uh, we are also, um, one of the other objectives that we cite is accommodating population growth and changing needs. Obviously, providing additional amenity space to two large residential towers is, is a benefit in terms of, of public planning. And that's the main points I wanted to bring up with, with respect to our planning review.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Height. I have no questions. Anybody else? You have something? You sound like you have something.
This is a new version of planning testimony for the board.
We're, uh, conservative because there's a lot of changes with the Redevelopment Plan. So if any questions did come up, I was here, but we figured we'd just run through the overall picture, even though it's a one-story amenity building.
Okay, understood. Counsel, is that your presentation?
That, that is our, our presentation, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anybody from the public?
I move to close the public.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam?
Um, okay, so planning staff asked that the applicant agree to the planning staff conditions in the memo dated November 1st of 2023?
Yes, the applicant agrees.
Okay, super. Um, so, uh, the nice part about this application that I didn't hear was that, uh, it's incorporating all native species, which will be subjected to the planting guidelines of the forestry standards. And, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's recently, uh, city council passed a native species requirement in all of our, uh, parks that are being built. So it's great to see, um, projects doing, uh, native species. And, um, I learned through these landscape architecture plans that we have a New Jersey tea bush. So there's a New Jersey tea, uh, if anybody was curious. Yeah, I know, I want to try some New Jersey tea. But, uh, it meets the objectives and goals of the Redevelopment Plan and, um, it would be a, an improvement to the, uh, the zone and, um, the landscaping in the area. So planning staff recommends approval.
All right. Thank you, Cam. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2023-0023 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Prinsery.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Looks great. I vote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Zai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Lyson.
Aye.
Motion carries on in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to item 13. I'm sorry, item 14 is case P 2023-0109 as a preliminary and final major site plan with variances for 216 Academy Street.
Good evening, Chairman. Commissioners Benjamin Wine of Prime and Tuvell on behalf of the applicant Academy Summit Development LLC. Uh, as indicated before, the property in question is located at 216-218 Academy Street. That's block 12204, lots 14 and 15, and we are located within Zone 4 of the Journal Square 2060 Redevelopment Plan. Before I get into my presentation, I'm going to proceed to the dais to provide Mr. Lampy with my notice package.
Chairman, I am to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application 216-218 Academy Street here in the city. Does appear to be in order. We're going to go ahead and mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
All right. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Lampy. So with that, um, the existing property, as I indicated, is both 216 and 218 Academy Street. And currently, it consists of a two-story residential building at 218 Academy and a 24-space surface parking lot at 216 Academy. Everybody on this board is likely familiar with the property, being that it's immediately adjacent to the courthouse, uh, on Summit Avenue. We're seeking here this evening to demolish the existing site improvements and to construct a 10-story mixed-use building that would consist of 60 residential dwelling units with approximately 1,812 square feet of commercial slash retail space and approximately 9,141 square feet of office space. We're also making use of corner lot bonus A that is applicable to the site, as well as the office space bonus as well, both of which bonuses we do comply with, given our property size and, and dimensions. This project was designed as a permitted use under the Redevelopment Plan and to be compliant with all of the restrictions thereunder. That said, we are seeking, uh, one deviation as well as two waivers. The deviation, as I heard Mr. De Silva speak to it before, is simply for the bulkhead height, um, where, again, this is, uh, this is a constant from my understanding in Journal Square, whereby they have a hard cap of 10 feet for the bulkhead height, um, in the entire redevelopment plan. Whereas our bulkhead height is at 19 feet, which accommodates, uh, the elevator core going to the roof to provide, to the amenity level, uh, as well as the stair bulkheads to be able to get to all of the mechanicals, which you'll see in detail. We also do have a waiver, um, from the forestry strand, standards for the number of street trees being provided, which you'll see in detail. We did have correspondence with the forestry division directly, simply indicating that, uh, while we required seven street trees, um, between our academy and our summit frontages, we can only feasibly install four street trees between the two frontages, given the wiring and other utilities in play, as well as some grading, um, issues. That said, we did have communication and they were amenable to providing a payment in lieu for those three, uh, missing trees, what I'll, what I'll call them. You're going to hear about the substantial site improvements that are being made, and I hope you'll ultimately agree that this is a positive for the particular site, as well as for the surrounding Journal Square area. I do have with me this evening two witnesses I intend to call our project architect, Yosef Malamed, and then also our trifecta in, in Mr. Sackler, who is our civil engineer, traffic engineer, and project planner. So, Mr. Chair, unless you have any questions of me, I'm happy to proceed with my first witness.
No, go ahead, counsel.
Perfect. So my first witness, as indicated, will be Yosef Malamed, our project architect.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm sorry.
I am. Yosef Malamed. Y-O-S-E-F. Last name Malamed, M-E-L-A, M-E-D.
Don't believe we've ever qualified you, have we?
No, it's the first time. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey for the past, uh, 12 years. I testified before in other locations, in New Jersey and in New York.
Okay, and that license is current tonight in the state of New Jersey? Great. Thank you. You're qualified.
All right. I'll start by talking about the building. It's located on the corner of Academy and Summit in zoning District 4, and we are applying for all the bonuses. The lot size area, it's 9,470, and we propose in 10 floors plus a small floor of amenity. The building height, it's 112 feet below the allowed height. And we are proposing 60 units. And I'll show you, uh, the presentation now. So as you can see on the left side here, this is the site location. It's adjacent to the courthouse and the residential row here on Academy. This is a super imposing the proposed development in that particular corner. We have an area view of the existing site as it is right now, and two photographs that illustrate the empty lot, which is currently a parking lot. What assists us to design the building are the zoning requirements, and we complied with several setbacks. One of them is along Academy, we have a five-foot setback from the adjacent building. We also have a street widening of about 15 feet along Summit. And everything that is under the development plan is applied to this particular development. Uh, this is the site plan. The site plan is arranged in such a way that we have a residential lobby, as well as office and retail lobby from Summit, as well as from the Academy. All entrances are recessed into the building to provide proper shelter and proper access from the sidewalk. I'm going to start talking about the building a little bit in details. I'm going to go through several, uh, floor plans, but overall, we have 60 units in various sizes. We have a mix of, uh, 58% of one-bedroom, uh, 35% of two-bedrooms, one-three-bedrooms, and three, uh, studio apartments, all ranging in sizes and in location in the building. As I mentioned earlier, we are developing the entire corner here. Coming from the courthouse, we have the office, uh, lobby, which has its own independent stairs and elevator. Next to it, we have a corner which will be occupied by a retail tenant. We have a setback entrances. Then we are approaching along Academy into the residential lobby and elevator lobby, mailbox area. And, and this is how we're going to travel to the upper floors. And the second floor is also offices. We're going to have four spaces, approximately 1,600 square feet for a small, small-sized company, hopefully local companies. And we have a separate elevator lobby for the offices and stairs. From the third floor, we're starting the residential portion. Typical floor from the third to the eighth floor are eight units per floor, ranging in sizes. The corner units are usually, uh, the larger one, which are two bedrooms. We emphasize on providing plenty of light and air throughout the facade on all three areas. We're incorporating Juliet balconies and actual balconies in other, uh, where it's allowed. On the upper floor, on the ninth floor, we have the setback, setback of approximately seven feet on all three sides. We have six units per floor on the setback portion. the setback portion. Uh, the, the larger apartments are at the corner, and they all have terraces and relationship to the outdoors on this floor. On the tenth floor, we have, uh, a similar layout, but we have balconies for each individual unit. Above that, we have a small amenity level, which will have a fit, fitness center and a wraparound roof terrace for all the tenants with a green roof and full of glazing pair requirement. So, we're gonna have to enjoy all the views and that this location can offer. Above that, we have the mechanical space. There is a small bulkhead, uh, and some mechanical equipment that is required. This is a rendering of the proposed design. Proposed design, it's for a ten-story building with amenity level on the top. We emphasize to work with the grid, which is, which has, you know, two rhythms, uh, that you can see we would be blending of the white and gray and the orange, trying to emphasize on the colors that we found in the, in the neighborhood in different materials, which we can see a lot of, you know, yellow buildings and brown and red buildings, as well as gray and others. So, everything is kind of emphasized on the building pattern. Uh, these are technical elevations. As you can see, each, for each individual unit, we have some kind of an outdoor indoor space. We have either balconies or Juliet balconies in, in every individual, uh, unit. The material we selected are metal panels in several colors, starting from gray, uh, white, uh, some kind of Arizona gold and copper. This is the elevation facing Summit Avenue. This is the elevation facing the courthouse. This is the elevation facing the residential building, and large elevations of the, uh, commercial base, the retail and the offices. Uh, we, part of the design is to emphasize the entrances, which have a small portal to create a street presence and to work with the city grid. This is an enlarged elevation of the rooftop terrace, an idea for a signage and lobby entrance. And this is the building section. The only deviation we asking on this building, it's pretty much the rooftop pen, the rooftop, uh, bulkhead will need to have access to the mechanical space and as indicated over here.
Okay, Yossi, just a couple of questions for you. So, specifically with respect to that, uh, that bulkhead, that is setback, um, from both of the frontages as well as from the interior portions of the property?
Correct.
Okay. And this is to allow for typical mechanical and elevator and, uh, and stair access, uh, to that mechanical space on the roof?
Correct. Mainly for proper maintenance over the years. There is equipment. There are things that needs to be, to get done on the roof, and that's the best way to provide access.
Okay. I also wanted to ask you about a couple of things. So, specifically, uh, Mr. De Silva had sent, uh, an email to us, uh, a few days ago, asking if we would be comfortable relocating the, uh, commercial entrance on the ground floor to the corner to kind of give that corner entrance type of look. So, you see no issue with doing that, correct?
I assume we're referring to this, uh, to this wedge over here. There is no issue here. We can modify the entrance to accommodate that.
Okay. And then lastly, if you can just jump to the, uh, to the cellar plan for a second, and just discuss what's going on in the cellar.
All right. So, in the cellar, all the building circulation system is traveling down to the cellar. We have the elevator. We have the two building cores. We have the two eager stairs. We have required, uh, bicycle parking and storage, and we have all the, uh, utilities spaces that are coming from the building, uh, elevator control room, and the outline is the entire site.
Okay. And then lastly, uh, just, just to confirm, I know you indicated before, but, um, but for this bulkhead height deviation, the, the entire building does, to your knowledge, comply with the requirements of the Journal Square redevelopment plan?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Chairman, I have nothing further for Mr. Malamed at this point.
Okay, I do have two questions. Um, let's start with the rooftop plan. Actually, I'm sorry, three questions, but let's start with the rooftop plan. Um, there is a, a railing around the top, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and that, right up to that railing is accessible to the public, right?
On the amenity level, correct, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, my question is that railing, and I know Commissioner Torres would hear, was here, he would ask this question, so I'm asking for him. Um, is there a gap between the bottom of the railing and the actual roof level, level where people walk?
I believe that this railing will be, uh, surface mounted to the parapet wall, and it will not be visible from the outside, obviously, but it will not be in front of the parapet. It will be integrated into the wall.
Okay, so there's a parapet, then there's a railing on top of that?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. That answers my question. Um, second question is, uh, I saw a stucco as one of the materials. Can you just point out where that is?
It is a cement stucco only on the side facade over here, which is adjacent to the, uh, residential small buildings.
Okay, and is that a smooth stucco or a rough stucco?
It's a smooth stucco.
Okay. Uh, and my last question is, uh, I see a single trash chute throughout the building.
Correct.
How are recyclables handled?
Well, there is a trash chute in every floor, and then there is a compactor room on the first floor, and in the first floor compactor room, there will be a separate bins here for recycling and garbage.
Okay, so how do those recyclables get down to that basement level, or that first floor level?
On the first floor. It's on the first floor. Everything goes with the trash chute into the equipment and the machinery, okay, which usually get, get organized.
That compactor sorts garbage and recycling?
No, I, it means that there is a person that actually goes, go through that and organize it.
From the compactor?
That's what I'm familiar with.
Never seen one like that. My understanding is the trash just goes into the compactor. It gets compacted down, and it's brought out to the street, correct?
That's true as well, but maybe I'm getting confused here.
Well, that, that drawing right there, you show, what are those three squares?
Bin, correct, yes. That's for, uh, recycling.
Okay, so how do they, how do they get taken down to the first floor? Is that the tenant's responsibility? Is that building maintenance?
Building maintenance.
Okay, and how often are they brought down?
I assume, you know, there is a super in the building, uh, on daytime, and I believe they'll do it daily.
Okay. My concern is, you know, that recycling doesn't end up in that compactor, and that's brought out to the street for pickup, correct? It's not private pickup? It's picked up by the city?
I think that this, this arrangement of, uh, picking up the garbage, is there a city, uh, pickup involved, or we have to do it privately?
That's not my area of expertise. I would assume it's just put out for city pickup?
Yeah, to, to answer your question, you're correct, Chairman. And again, to Mr. Malamed's point, the recycling will be separated by a super and brought down to the recycling bins.
Okay. Okay, just so it doesn't back up and
Correct.
You know, rather than put it in the bin or call the super, people just throw it in the recycling chute, or the, the trash chute. Okay, that was it for me. Anybody else? Any questions? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Okay. Go ahead. So, my next and final witness will be Matthew Sekler, who I would, uh, intend to have sworn in in three official capacities.
Do you need a computer?
He's got his own.
Uh, Mr. Sekler is sworn in. Uh, you've only been qualified as a landscape architect, correct?
As a planner.
As a planner.
That's the one thing I don't do as landscape architect.
Okay, so what are we qualifying you as right now?
A civil engineer, uh, traffic engineer, and professional planner would be the three, uh, licenses that I hold, and I'd like to be qualified in that way.
Okay, so we've qualified you already as a planner. You're licensed as a traffic planner, and, I'm sorry, what was the other?
And a civil engineer.
And a civil engineer. Those are current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
You got all that, Mike?
All right, so Matt, uh, just to, for expediency sake, but also to be clear, I think we should try to divide your testimony in your official capacities as you, as you walk through it, but if you can give the board, um, an explanation as to the project being proposed.
Certainly. And on the board before you is an exhibit that we prepared. It's essentially a colorized version of the civil plan set that we have submitted. This one is actually dated, uh, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. It's prepared by Stonefield Engineering, uh, and Design. What you see on the, uh, plan before you is a overlay of the site plan colorized, showing the building in that yellowish color, the vegetation, including the street trees, and the, um, green roof area is in green. You could see the aerial image, uh, of the streets and the surrounding areas, um, behind the site plan itself. So, that's what's showing on the screen here.
Uh, we do, we do need to mark these. I was just gonna ask.
Let's mark it as A2.
Mr. Lampy could have that marked as A2.
And is that the only colorized version that we're
Yes.
looking at, or are there more?
This is the only sheet.
Okay.
Counsel, if you could provide that file via email to planning staff?
Certainly.
And again, you saw the pretty pictures from the architect. This is the top-down approach, which is not quite as pretty, but we've wanted to show, uh, obviously, the enhancements made to this property. Uh, just to remind the board, uh, this is currently, the majority of the site is currently a parking lot. Looks like it became a parking lot sometime in the nineteen seventies. Um, is, that's the majority. That's basically the right-hand side of the page, and then we do have the residential building that currently exists on the left-hand side of the page. But essentially, you have over a six thousand seven hundred square foot parking lot being re, uh, developed, um, into the proposed mixed-use building that is before you, and you saw from the architect's design. Again, this is on the northwest corner of Summit and Academy Streets, and it's block one two two oh four, lot fourteen and, um, and fifteen. Uh, again, you've heard from the architect in terms of the, uh, design of the project, in terms of the building itself. From a civil perspective, we are being mindful of all the setbacks, required setbacks. So, in terms of the side yards, rear yards, front yards, we are consistent with what the zone plan allows. Um, we are, uh, in taking a lot that primarily, uh, is motor vehicle runoff, meaning rainwater is hitting the majority of the site, which is pavement and going into the stormwater system through an inlet that's located near the corner of Academy and Summit. We are obviously changing that, now having rainwater hitting our clean roof, uh, and being piped into the stormwater, uh, into our stormwater system that is internal to the site itself, as well as we have the green roof area, which is shown in green on the plan before you, which is almost three hundred square feet of, of green roof trays. And again, that's shown in green on, uh, exhibit A2. All that rainwater that hits the roof for the green roof areas are then, um, brought down into a, um, a holding area internal to the building. I think you saw it on the, uh, basement or subterranean architectural plan. At that area, we're able to hold over six thousand gallons of water internal to the site, and then release it, obviously, slowly into the system, uh, that's in, uh, at the corner of Summit and Academy, being a big benefit from what happens today. Obviously, what happens today is when you get those heavy rains, water is basically going right into the inlet, uh, on our site, and then connecting immediately into the city combined sewer system. So, what you get is when during heavy storms, backups and overloading of the city system. What we are doing here is when you have those storms hitting our roof, now clean rain, because it's not being mixed with motor vehicle runoff areas, being piped into our building, holding that six thousand gallons of water and releasing slowly over time. So, that's obviously a benefit when you're having new development on previous, uh, previous sites that did not have, I'd say, a formal stormwater management system. We are proposing the four street trees, which you see on A2. Um, these were, uh, and the species were discussed with the city forester. Unfortunately, we do not have the ability to, to add the additional three trees within our frontage due to the proximity of ADA ramps, the traffic signal that's at the corner, that equipment, as well as overhead and underground utilities. Um, so again, as counsel mentioned, we are in agreement in terms of paying into the tree fund, um, to account for the, um, uh, uh, lacking of three street trees, but we've provided as many as we can as part of this development. Um, we are also, uh, based on, um, review letters with, I believe it was planning staff, are agreeable to adding some outdoor bikes, uh, um, parking area. We do have the internal bike parking, which you heard from the architect, uh, in terms of, uh, in the basement level, but we are looking to provide a couple of public bike parking spaces, uh, located in the areas between the street trees, um, in areas that would not impede the, um, uh, throat, the, the through path for pedestrians along the sidewalks. Um, in addition, we've also provided lighting plans, and we are agreeable to any, and I don't believe there's actually any outstanding engineering comments related to the lighting plan that we have here, and we are consistent with what's permitted within the zone plan. In terms of a traffic perspective with this application, uh, again, in, um, in compliance with your redevelopment plan, we are actually not providing any parking on this site. Uh, that means no curb cuts on this property, which again is definitely an enhancement from the city's point of view, or at least I'm seeing from a city's point of view from a traffic perspective. Again, taking away surface motor vehicle parking lots with driveways and areas in the Journal Square redevelopment plan is actually consistent with what the goals are. In fact, having an off-site, um, parking lot, which is in operation now, is a non-conforming use that we are obviously making conforming, being before the planning board. Um, the, um, the, this is an area that obviously is within walking distance of the Journal Square path station, and there are also ten other bus lines that are located within about a quarter mile of the site. So, this is a site that is well-suited for this density, this mix of use from a traffic perspective, and again, helps promote development that does not, is not reliant on motor vehicle, uh, usage, which again is a goal of the redevelopment plan. In terms of a planning perspective, again, looking at this property, uh, we are taking a, you know, obviously, the, the, uh, residential dwelling on the site, um, is a permitted use, but the, uh, parking lot, which is the majority of the larger lot, um, is not permitted use. We are obviously taking that out of commission, adding this development, which you heard from the architect meets the density, meets the height, meets the setbacks, meets the height with the exception of the, um, the, uh, the bulkhead area that's being used for mechanicals. Um, and so therefore, we do believe this is an application that is generally, or is consistent with the redevelopment plan objectives. I quickly read a few that I've found, uh, we are advancing as part of this project. It includes promoting the pattern of mixed-use and multi-use development. This having retail, uh, residential and office space does promote mixed-use development, which again, uh, provides that balance of jobs to housing, which you're looking for within the Journal Square redevelopment area. We are also making walking and biking easy, safe, desirable, and a convenient mode of, mode of transport by adding residential units and office areas, uh, that are not reliant on parking, uh, spaces and, and motor vehicle use. We are reducing automobile, automobile dependency by encouraging high develop, uh, high density and close proximity to mass transit, obviously being advanced as part of this project. We are promoting the principles of smart growth and transit village development. We are coordinating redevelopment activities that are coordinated and I'm saying, uh, removing obsolete, I'm gonna say structures, but really obsolete uses within the zone, because again, parking lots are not, not consistent with what the redevelopment plan is seeking for, uh, this area of the Zone Four area of the, um, Journal Square twenty sixty plan. In addition, we are maximizing roof, rooftop open spaces for recreation and, and/or green roofs was another goal, which again, we've shown that we are adding, uh, obviously recreational space in our upper floor areas, as well as obviously the green roof on the property itself, on the building itself. So, overall, I do believe we're advancing a number of the goals within the redevelopment plan. I believe we are advancing the MLUL through Purpose A, general health, safety, and welfare through Purpose I and H, visual environment, as well as free flow of traffic, and we are obviously also, um, as part of this project, um, seeking one deviation, which is that height. Again, I don't see any negative impact as it relates to the height. That height is solely because of the mechanical space, uh, and mechanical, uh, equipment that's necessary to support this development. Uh, again, I've heard a number of applications here. Seems like a little bit of an inconsistency for getting us to this story and this height for the use of the building, but still needing to maintain and have equipment at that highest, um, uh, elevation. And then obviously, the, um, one, uh, waiver related to the forestry, uh, standards for having seven street trees, where three are, are, or four are being proposed. So, overall, I do believe this is an application that can be granted. I think it is actually consistent and is exactly what is, uh, looked at within the Journal Square twenty sixty plan as the right type of development for a property such as this.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate it. So, Chairman, I have nothing further for this witness.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Sekler. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's your presentation, counsel?
So, Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I certainly like to reserve the right to sum up to the extent that that is ultimately deemed necessary.
Of course. Okay, thank you. So, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Counsel, closing statement?
Uh, Chairman, I just, I'll keep it brief, but I wanna thank the board for the opportunity to hear this application. Um, on behalf of the development team, I know my clients are extremely excited about this development. It's taken a lot of, uh, work on the backend to develop, um, a, a unique property that has, uh, you know, that is ultimately that is ultimately entirely consistent with the redevelopment plan but for that bulkhead deviation. Um, as I said, they're very excited to bring this forward. Uh, I want to thank planning staff for working with, with us so diligently, and, uh, I would respectfully request that the application be granted as presented.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
And with the stipulations to comply with the, uh, with the city planning recommendations.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Matt, anything?
Um, yes, um, so planning staff provided a memo dated four-nine-two-zero-twenty-four to the planning board commissioners as well as the applicant. Um, within that memo, there are seven conditions proposed. Um, does the applicant agree to abide by those conditions?
Yes, we do.
Excellent. Um, I would also like to point out, um, since this was a late arrival, dated April sixteen, twenty-twenty-four today, and it is on the portal. Um, but if, for, um, consistency's sake, just to due diligence, if we want to mark this in as evidence, um, it's a memo from Lichwan Wang, who is the, uh, city staff engineer from, in the Division of Engineering. Um, and there, um-
Now, let's mark it as B one.
B one, got it. Thank you, Santa. Um, in that memo, um, she asks that, um, for the purposes of trash disposal, that the application comply with the Division of Sanitation Regulations. Um, I believe Chairman Langston had some questions about that, and I just, to make sure all of our bases are covered, staff would also like to recommend a final condition, um, that, um, the development comply with all sanitation, Division of Sanitation Regulations and Guidance, and to, um, submit revisions in the signature plans to planning staff if necessary.
Absolutely, and I should have asked Mr. Sackler this, but I can confirm for the record that I did discuss it with Mr. Sackler's office, and we can comply with, uh, the entirety of Ms. Wang's letter as well.
Excellent. Okay, if you could, just give us a second to review that. I didn't see this was up today. Unfortunately, planning isn't my full-time job, so I don't review anything the day of. Okay. Yeah, I don't see anything that's, that's out of the ordinary. Matt, do you concur? There's nothing out of the ordinary.
I do concur. Um, um, these are all standard conditions, mainly about compliance with, um, city standard, engineering standards.
Okay, and item nine, Academy Street and Summit Ave will be milled, milled and paved curb-to-curb for the entire street length in front of the subject site, including the intersection with keyways?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, we will comply.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two-zero-two-three-dive-zero-one-zero-nine as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Um, I see no detriment to zone plan, redevelopment plan, or master plan. I like the plan. Your deviation is, your seeking is, is understandable. I vote aye.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner, Councilwoman Prince Ari?
Um, quickly, because this is my first meeting, so I apologize if I'm a little out of turn or a little slow to jump into something. I just, in going through the engineering recommendations, they mentioned the tree pits is to four by twelve with the twenty-eighteen forestry standards. However, we have new forestry standards to twenty-twenty-three, so I would just ask that that be amended to follow the twenty-twenty-three standards and not the twenty-eighteen standards.
Not knowing what those are off by heart, I'll defer to Mr. De Silva. If he feels that they would not impede our ability to provide bike racks, which was recommended by your transportation planner, then I see no reason we can't comply with that. I just, I don't want interagencies to start running afoul of each other.
No, and that's actually why I'm, I'm raising the question, because I see in one, it's the forestry standards, and here's twenty-eighteen, so I just, I just want clarity on that.
Um, certainly, I, um, do not know the forestry sta- the difference between the twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty-three forestry standards on the top of my head, but, um, I believe we can clarify that all current standards, which would include the twenty-twenty-three standards, um, would comply, and if there is, if a conflict arises between the bike racks and the tree pits, that, um, the applicant will work with staff for an appropriate solution.
Sure. Yep, no problem at all.
All right, thank you, and again, apologize if I'm slightly out of turn here.
No, thank you.
Um, Santa, do we have to start a new vote since we just changed the condition?
I think we do.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve case P two-zero-two-three-dive-zero-one-zero-nine as presented to the board with the new condition.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded again for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Lipsky?
So just to the councilwoman's point is if that's a, uh, council, uh, ordinance amendment, then that certainly would supersede any recommendation by, and you get it, aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye.
Commissioner, Councilwoman Prince Ari?
Aye.
And Chair Langston?
Um, I, I think, Mia, we're gonna have a... We're gonna have-
Good time.
No, we're gonna have fist, fisticuffs over bike versus tree here. Okay, um, no, I, I think it's, uh, I think it's a good project. It's, uh, bringing the site into, uh, conforming use. Uh, there's no detriment to the zone plan, redevelopment plan, or master plan, and, um, I vote aye.
Excellent, motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, counsel. All right, let's move on to item fifteen. It's case two, P two-zero-two-three-dash-zero-zero-seven-two as a conditional use for eight-forty communal pav.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening, counsel.
Jersey City professionals. Uh, my name is Ben Lindeman. I'm appearing on behalf of my colleague, uh, Joseph Paparo from Porzio Bromberg in Newman and Morristown. On behalf of our client, VT four-twenty LLC. We have, we will be hearing, uh, testimony from one, um, person tonight, and that is the, um, project's architect. Uh, the applicant is also here if there's any questions, um, and so is the, um, security director for the applicant. Um, so we're here to request conditional use approval, um, where we believe all conditions are met, uh, for a class-five cannabis retailer at an existing ground-floor retail space with associated signage in the commercial automotive zone, um, New Jersey City Ordinance three-four-five-dash-six-zero, um, dot five. Um, there are internal updates being made to the property. There's no external, um, improvements being made. We have, uh, reviewed the planning memo dated, um, April tenth, two thousand twenty-four, uh, and prepared to provide testimony, um, that all, you know, as I said, all conditions were met. Um, you will hear testimony from our, the applicant's architect, Ronald, Ronald Elkins, who stands to my right, um, who'll take you through the floor plan, some operational details about the application.
Counsel, do you have the notice?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Chairman, I had reviewed the electronic notice, but obviously, now that we're back in person, I am able to collect the original hard copies. And Chairman, this does appear to be the one that I was able to review electronically. It all did appear to be in order, so we're gonna go ahead and mark that as A one for purposes of the record. Uh, counsel, I don't know if you're forty-one, forty-two, or sixty-two of retail cannabis is before this body, so. Uh, we've heard a lot of them. Uh, if we could just get into, you know, the conditional uses, if, if it's all compliant, uh, Chairman, I don't know, uh, I was looking on the portal. We've already been to the cannabis board.
Correct.
We have their resolution, so-
Yeah.
All the kind of stuff that you do at the cannabis board, we don't really get into here, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're strictly on the, the zoning.
The conditional uses, and, you know, as I said, we've reviewed the memo from the planner, and our architect will provide testimony that supports that the conditional's, uh, uses are met.
Okay.
The conditions are met, sorry.
Thank you. Excellent.
I do. Uh, state, um, name is, uh, Ronald Elkins, uh, R-O-N-A-L-D, Elkins, E-L-K-I-N-S. I go by Ron. And I'm licensed in New Jersey, and my license is in good standing.
Great, thank you, Mr. Elkins. You're qualified.
Excellent, thank you. Um, so basically, I'll just run through the plans very quickly. Um, you know, like you said, there have been a number of, uh, cannabis dispensaries already in front of the board. Um, we have presented many of them as well. I, I don't know how many at this point, at least eight or ten. Um, this is, uh, the, uh, a one-story building on the core, three-story building, sorry, one-story commercial space, three-story building total. Second and third floors of the building are residential. First floor is commercial. Currently used as a convenience store, so similar retail use. Um, basically, the intention is to, um, do very little demolition within the space. You know, a couple of walls are coming down, mostly finishes, um, are the bulk of the, the demolition. There is a small parking area behind the building dedicated to the tenant, the residential tenants above. This plan, I have redacted the, um, security plan. I do have hard copies of that. I think it's also been uploaded in the portal. Um, basically, we have an entrance, you know, the existing entrance is going to remain at the south of the property, um, through a vestibule, which, you know, does double duty as a, a manlock, as well as, uh, um, for air conditioning and, and heating and cooling. Uh, identification check for customers at this desk. Once customers have been verified to be, um, in the space, oops, sorry, uh, verified to be in the space, then there's a, a small retail area and a cash register counter with three cash registers here, ATM, as well as self-serve kiosks in the front. The rest of the space is staff-only, um, highly restricted access between the, uh, the budtenders, the, the cashiers back here, the fulfillment area, which is an extension of the vault essentially, um, the actual vault itself to, to store and preserve all of the, the cannabis products, you know, off-hours and just keep them secure. Um, with reinforced, um, all six sides of that room will be reinforced, floors, ceiling, all four walls will be reinforced from, um, secure, you know, to, to avoid access to that room. The deliveries will be maintained from the rear of, the rear existing door of the property, um, you know, through this corridor, back into the, the vault itself. Uh, we are intending on staging the, any, uh, waste that happens in the, the facility inside the space and then being delivered out for, um, uh, licensed haulers at scheduled pickup times. So there will be no outsor- or outdoor storage of cannabis waste. There's also a small quarantine room. Let me see if I can zoom in here. A quarantine room here for any products that have expired or have, uh, gone off, um, and are unsellable. So that's, uh, locked storage here. All of these doors are essentially, um, electronically secured. AC just is our notice for, um, access control. So key fob, passcode, um, anything like that will be restored there, or will be, you know, um, used for access. And then also, not only access, but for, um, uh, maintaining records of who comes and goes. Even, so even though the restroom isn't required to have, um, access control, it's always a good idea to see, you know, for security to make sure we know, you know, who's coming and going throughout the property. And then, um, once a customer has their, has had their order fulfilled, they'll just leave through the frame, the same front door. The exterior of the property will main, remain largely unchanged. I think we are adding, uh, well, let me start over. The finishes basically are remaining unchanged. The only things that are changing are the, the face of the non-conforming signage. Um, the frames are staying. They're already illuminated. All we're changing are the, the graphics on those panels. The materials will stay as they are, which is vinyl siding above and a stucco at the ground floor level. We are adding a few, uh, additional security lights, as well as security cameras throughout the exterior. And I believe that is all. Let me double-check this. Um, there was a question about noise. Um, this property will not have a generator as for the, um, the equipment backup. Basically, that'll just be provided by internal batteries, uh, within the equipment itself. And rear yard work and access, basically, the, the rear yard is remaining unchanged and is only for, um, uh, use of the residential apartments above.
Ron, could you, uh, is there anything, um, for odor mitigation?
Odor mitigation, sorry, that's a very good point. Um, we are going to maintain the existing heating and cooling system, but we are adding additional exhaust systems, which, um, any exhaust system that is, uh, installed in the space, whether it's existing or new, will have carbon filtration on that.
Thank you. I believe that's the extent of the direct testimony. If there's any-
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, Mr. Elkins, I saw an air conditioning unit on the front of the building. That's being-
That'll be removed, yes.
That's removed, okay.
Yes, this, this basically window unit right here will be, will be removed and we'll be infilling that, that opening there.
Okay, and is there a signage plan yet?
There is not a signage plan right now, but, um, but the intention is basically to just remove the, the plastic, um, panels from these, these, uh, signage frames and just replace them with new graphics.
Okay, and also the one on top?
The, the blade sign here, yes.
Francisco, is that compliant? The blade sign plus the canopy sign?
So because it's non-conforming and all they're doing is just replacing the images, it is, will allow it. And they're also in the, um, they're using the previous zone, which was HC, uh-
CA.
CA.
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, understood. And thank you, you took my odor mitigation question. Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
Well, I'll call public in a second. That's for the board, I'm sorry. Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Elkins. Appreciate it. Counsel, that's your presentation?
Correct, thank you.
Okay, and we generally don't want security testimony. Uh, you know, we don't like that information to be public, uh, just that we know there is a security system that's good enough for us. We leave it up to the experts there, so, um, so if that's your presentation, I'll open it up for a public comment?
Thank you.
Okay, so is there anybody here from the public that wants to come up? Please come on up.
Yes. Uh, my name is Shan Zhao. Uh, I'm the owner of, uh, Ten Orleans Avenue. Uh, I'm the first house. I'm right next to the eight-forty communal.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, good evening.
Thank you.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity that I can speak to you tonight. Um, I want to express my deep opposition to, sorry, what's this? To the proposed opening of cannabis store, because it's right next to our residential home. Uh, I understand that eight-forty is in commercial zone, but, uh, it's sitting on the corner of the communal, uh, Orleans Avenue, and it's right connected to us. We are like twenty feet from it. Uh, I, I know that communal, they, they won't have enough parking, so they, most people will park into our street uh, when they visit them. Uh, our street is already very, very congested in parking, because we have a big apartment building, so ourself is not enough. Uh, so if this ha- will happen, then I think my driveway will be frequently blocked by people. I, I won't be able to go in and out, um, freely. Uh, second is, uh, second, we think, um, if the, if the cannabis store is open here, then, uh, obviously, there will be more people, uh, standing around. there will be more people standing around, using the drug in the street and more loitering, loitering around the store. I think especially late, late into the night, it will pose a threat to the security, safety for our neighbors, our neighborhood. And our tranquility of our neighborhood will be broken and we should not have to live in the fear of our streets becoming hotspots for illicit activities. Besides the safety problem, this, if I see people using drugs around our street because they park there, walking around, what is the message it's sending to our children? We don't want to expose our young people, young kids to such influences, especially in their formative years. The next concern is the smell. The strong smell emanating from the store will not only be a nuisance to our resident, but also a health concern. Hmm, you know, we enjoy our, it's, it's like a secondhand smoke, I don't, I'm trying to be healthy, I eat vegetables, I exercise, eat fish oil and everything, and now this is like, you have to smell this all the time from the store, from the people doing this around our street. If I open my window, it's a nice place, I like my neighborhood, I don't want to open the window and smell this all the time. So I think the problem is, it's just too close to us. I know theoretically it's commercial zone, but it's really right next to me, you see if that's the store, I'm right here. So I hope if it's, if you can place it in somewhere pure commercial, so they don't like, like right next to us and...
That was, that was your three minutes, ma'am. That was your three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else from public that wants to comment on this application? Anybody else from public?
Chair Sinemore from public, I would like to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Francisco, do you want to add anything?
Yes, so I will be very brief. I did mention at the time of the submission, the retailer was in a commercial automotive zone, however, after the zoning change in November, the zone is now residential, commercial too. The applicant received approvals from the Cannabis Control Board on April 10th. They are separated from schools more than 200 feet. There are no other cannabis dispensaries nearby. And there is a map in my memo that is also posted on the data portal, as well as staff is in receipt of all required submittals, and they're also posted on the data portal. Does the applicant, I wasn't too sure if the applicant agreed to the conditions listed on the report, I didn't hear.
Oh, from the, from your memo?
Yeah. I also did want to add one more condition, which was, at the time, before you submit to zoning for the signage, if you can submit it to planning staff for review.
Planning staff for review at the time of...
For the signage itself, just to see what the sign looks like before it gets the final approval.
Yep, I'll make a note of that.
That'll be before signature set?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Lastly, staff does recommend approval with conditions?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P2023-0072 as presented to the board this evening for approval.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay. Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez?
Abstain.
Commissioner Lipsky?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green? Commissioner Gangadin?
Aye, good luck.
Commissioner, Councilwoman Prince Ari?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye.
So we have five in favor and two abstentions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, let's move on to item 16, this case P2023-0075 is a preliminary and final major site plan for 197 Palisade Avenue.
The risk of sounding repetitive, good evening again Chairman, Commissioners Benjamin Wine of Primate Tuvell on behalf of the applicant, 197 Palisade Avenue LLC. Just before I get started, similar to the last couple of times, I will present Mr. Lampy.
Counsel, what you want on at our next meeting?
We're gonna have a chair here for you.
Feast or famine?
Good problem to have.
Chairman, I have received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing for 197 Palisade Ave here in the city, it does appear to be in order, we're going to mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel. So just a brief background on this particular application, as indicated, we are here seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for the property located at 197 Palisade Avenue, and that is block 5902, lot 20. The property is located in the RC2 zoning district, and we are also making use of the affordable housing overlay, which will be discussed in detail by our project architect. The property currently does consist of a vacant lot, and this neighborhood is surrounded largely by residential uses, as well with a couple of commercial and mixed uses in the, in the general neighborhood. We are proposing, as I said, preliminary and final major site plan approval, we're seeking to construct a new five-story mixed-use building that will consist of 16 residential units and approximately 760 square feet of ground floor commercial space. Of those 16 units, as I indicated before, that we are making use of the affordable housing overlay, two of the 16, which is just slightly over 10%, approximately 15%, will be designated as affordable housing and deeded as such. We have confirmed with the Division of Affordable Housing what that unit mix will look like, specifically, it will be the three-bedroom unit in the building, which is the only three-bedroom unit, will be an affordable unit, as well as one of the one-bedroom units as well. This application is free of any variances, deviations, or waivers, it's entirely compliant with your zoning ordinance, or land development ordinance, as I should say. And, and as well, this evening with me, I have two witnesses, I do intend to call our project architect, Russell Bodnar, to speak to the majority of the application, I do also have the project engineer, Sean Delaney, present in case there are any questions that Mr. Bodnar cannot address in his testimony. So as I said before, unless you have any questions of me, I'm happy to proceed with Mr. Bodnar.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Yes.
Yes, I do. Yes, my name is Russell, last name is Bodnar, B O D N A R, I reside at 52 Long Hill Road in Long Valley, New Jersey. I've been a licensed architect for a number of years and been to this board many, many times already, and my license is in good standing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bodnar, good to see you, and you're qualified.
Right, so going a little old school, I didn't know your technology was working so good. So, as you, as we said earlier, we're completely compliant, we have no variances, the building has 16 residential units, we're allowed 11 according to what we're allowed just as of right, so we're doing the overlay, we're going to be providing two low-income units, one of them being a three-bedroom, and that's located on the, on the lower level, I'll show you in a moment, and a, and a one-bedroom as well on an upper level, which will be according to what the low-income people decide which unit they're, they're going to take. So as you can see, we have six one-bedrooms, the six one-bedrooms consist of 682 square feet to 702 square feet, and we have one two-bedroom, that's 1,088 square feet, seven two-bedrooms plus studies, 1,137 square feet to 1,382 square feet, two three-bedroom units, one being 1,061 square feet, and another one being 1,802 square feet, and 760 square feet of commercial space.
Let me jump to the plans. Is that one, yeah, I need that one.
Thank you. As you can see here, we're on, located on Palisades Avenue, 197 Palisades Avenue, pretty much right across from this area near the hospital there, so directly, a little adjacent to the hospital down the road. As you can see from our front elevation, I just showed you a moment ago the rendering, but as you can see, we're looking to do a five-story building, the top story is set back 10 feet, that's required by the zone, we're in the, again, we're in the R2 zone, we're required...
RC2.
RC2, and we're required, we have no variances, so let me jump to the next page. As you can see here on page sheet ZN2, our first floor consists of the commercial space, 760 square feet, we have two units located directly behind that, that space, we have a three-bedroom unit that we're going to be, that'll be our low-income housing unit, and it has a nice actually access to the rear yard with a rear patio, adjacent to that is a two-bedroom, 1,085 square foot unit, and we also have a building gym in the front, a lounge, and we have nine bike parking spaces on the right-hand side with our mail and our gas meter room adjacent to that as well. We have a trash pickup, trash room on, on the one location on the left-hand side, sprinkler and electric room as well. All the second through, basically second through, fourth floor are primarily the same, we have two one-bedroom units located in the back, again, 682 square feet, 700 square feet in the rear, those have terraces on the second floor level, and then the upper levels will have balcony areas. In the front of the building, we have two two-bedrooms in the front of the building, and they both have two-bedroom studies, so those have 11, that's 1,199 square feet on the, on the left-hand side and 1,137 square feet. So again, go to the following sheet, as you can see, basically our typical floor, our third and fourth are basically the same as our second floor, those have two, two one-bedrooms again in the back, two two-bedroom in the front. When we get to our fifth floor, this is where we have that actual setback, there's a nice little terrace area along that whole front, that's a beautiful three-bedroom unit, we're trying to promote like families, more larger units here, so that actually has a nice direct access view to the, to the city from there, on, on the upper, on that upper level, you'll be able to see nice, beautiful views of the city, and behind that, you have a nice two-bedroom plus study, a very large 1,382 square feet unit, so basically, there's only two units on that floor, so it makes it like a whole penthouse feeling, and that has a nice beautiful balcony on the back, that's 26 by 5 feet. As we get to the upper level, the top floor, which is basically the roof, we do have a little accessory for the roof, we have an elevator area that brings us up with a little elevator vestibule area that's connected to one of the staircases, we have 530 square feet of roof area in the front, that's actually located 10 feet from the roof, so we're required to have 10 feet from the front parapet to our roof deck, so in front of that, in that 10-foot area, we're putting, we're putting green roofing, 330 square feet there, our total square footage for green roofing is 990 square feet, so that's what we're, we're providing. We also do have a entire stormwater management system that's located in our rear yard, we can go without if you want later, the engineer can, if you, if you request, we are providing an ample amount of water storage on our, on our lot, and right now, it's a vacant lot, so we're trying to bring in, trying to make sure we comply with any kind of stormwater Basically here, we have the elevations of the front and rear of the building, as you can see in the front of the building, we have that brick and we have metal panels, and I can go into that a little bit more when I show the rendering. In the back of the building, we're basically doing a series of, it's actually hardy plank panels, hardy plank siding, they're going to be all, it's like a cement board siding, and that's going to be in these other colors here, we have, we have a gray color, an evening blue, and then on the top here, these other areas here are going to be more the cream color at the top bulkheads, so this way, they kind of vanish a little bit further into the back when we have the darker, and we actually have some lighter colors on, on the side of the building as well. And as you can see here, we go to ZN, ZN5, you can see on the side, we have some stucco, only at the location of the stucco, light colored stucco, very smooth finish, just at the locations of the stairwells, so we felt like we wanted to bring in some extra materials, not just to have just one basic material, so we wanted to bring in that feel, as well as the cement board siding that infills that location, and we have a series of small windows just on the side that are just inset-in, they're like three foot one from the property line. One of our sides, on our left-hand side, we do have a building adjacent to us, and we are providing three foot one from any location of their build, their windows on that property line. So as you can see here, let's go back to the, to the rendering. I got it. As you can see here from the rendering, we are providing, we're, we're proposing a beautiful brick and metal clad building, as you can see, our, our windows themselves are all black metal, as well as our panels that are infilled, we're doing a whole brick, basically paired type style building with a little bit of lime, limestone accents throughout the building and a nice dark cornice, black cornice, and our, in our, our setback is actually going to be all in a metal cladding with black windows and a black metal cladding that, setback about 10 feet, so in reality, when you're down on the ground floor, you'll never see that, we had actually another rendering done earlier, and the other rendering, you couldn't see, you actually couldn't even see from the, the lower perspective that actual setback whatsoever, so I told the guy to actually bring up the height so your actually eye level's really here, so you can actually see that there is actually a setback in the building.
And Russ, just to confirm before you go any further, because I don't know that this was submitted, but it is just a blown-up version of the rendering shown on your cover page?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so counsel, I don't know if you want to mark it separately?
Might as well mark it, let's mark it.
Yeah, A2, yeah.
We can mark it as A2. You can submit digitally, just the separate...
Sorry, Russ, you can continue.
Yeah, basically, that's really the, the, the application itself, as you can see from the lower level, our entrance to our main building is on the right-hand side, our emergency egress is on the left, and we have the entrance to the commercial on, on the left as well. So you'd be able to go into the commercial and, and you have that nice little 760 square foot commercial space that could be used for a nice little spot in the neighborhood. There is some neighborhood commercial, so we felt like it would be nice to have that commercial, and it's nice to have the rear access to the board, I mean, for the rear access yard for the two lower apartment units, we really felt that was a nice, a nice thing to do. And like, like we said earlier, 16 units, 11 are allowed, we're going for the overlay, and we're providing two low-income housing units, a nice three-bedroom and a nice one-bedroom where they had decided where they want to put it.
Okay, and Russ, just to confirm, I know that you, you touched on the stormwater management, again, we can have Mr. Delaney speak to it if the board wants more details about the technical aspects, but is your understanding that it would be located in the rear of the property, and it will be a detention system that would detain water and then pipe that out into the city system?
Yes, there'll be a whole detention system that's located in the rear of the property, there actually, the rear of the property has a nice yard, we're 15 feet from the property line, and that, there's going to be an underground detention system there that brings our roof leaders into it, and remember, we are doing 990 square feet of green roofing on our roof as well, so we're, actually, I think we're actually providing more than what we required in terms of the, what the city requirements were.
Okay, and then last question for you, just to confirm, those affordable units, I believe it's one low-income and one moderate income per the Division of Affordable Housing requirements, they will be constructed to the exact same specs as all of the market-rate units in the building?
Yes, they will.
Okay, so other than having been deed restricted, nobody would be able to tell that those are the affordable housing units?
No, like I said earlier, we are, one of our, the three-bedroom units actually has a very nice rear access to the, to the, to the, have a whole actually, a whole yard in the rear, so that actually makes a very nice unit, it's a three-bedroom, and one of the, and the one-bedrooms, again, all the one-bedrooms have actually a little terrace deck area, so you wouldn't know, and they're all very similar, between eight, 682 square feet to 702, so depending on which one the, the, you know, Jersey City decides they want, they're basically getting one of these same exact units somebody else would be getting.
All right, Chairman, that concludes my direct examination of Mr. Bodnar.
Okay, thank you, counsel, you stole my thunder there with that question.
I knew it was coming.
The only question I have for Mr. Bodnar is the metal panels on the front of the building, those are solid metal panels, they're not PTAC units?
No, these are, these are all, these are all solid panels in there, and they're actually like, they actually have like some decorative material in there, we don't, all the HVAC is actually like forced air systems.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no, there's no venting grills or anything.
Okay, that's my only question, anybody else? Okay, that's my only question, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bodnar, we appreciate it.
So Chairman, I would turn it over to the board just to see if you request any specific testimony regarding the stormwater management from our engineer, otherwise, that would conclude my presentation.
Chairman, I don't know that it's necessary, if any member of the board wants to hear it, we can reserve the right to present it, should it become necessary, but I think it's pretty straightforward, it'll be built to standard and comply with all the regulation requirements, so it's up to the board as always, Chairman.
Yeah, if, you know, if anybody feels the need, speak up.
No.
Even if it's after public testimony, whenever.
All right, so with that, that would conclude my presentation, and I would respectfully request the right to, to sum up if deemed necessary.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So at this time, let's open it up for a public comment, is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application?
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public. I move to close the public.
Second.
Looking to see who's here, I can't see what the, okay, so, motion was made and seconded, public is closed. Jenru, this is yours, anything you wanna add?
Yeah, I would just ask if the applicant has reviewed the staff report, and if they agree on those conditions on the record.
That is correct, yes, we do.
And would the staff recommend approval with conditions?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P-2023-0075 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, we don't see so much of this type of development, you referenced Christ Hospital, which is on the east side of Palisade, and so I think, you know, a few blocks south, a couple blocks south of the hospital on the other fronting, and the design is quite well, even if it's old school, it looked well, so I wrote aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Very good plan, yeah, the hospital, that's one plus point, I would say aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Yeah, I just wanna comment on the two affordable units, very, very good, very complimentary to the project, great addition to the neighborhood as well, aye.
Councilwoman Prince Ari.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Wine.
I'll see everybody in a couple of weeks.
Okay, that's it, guys, let's move on to memorialization of resolutions, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to memorialize the following resolutions, I have five today. First resolution of the City of Jersey City, planning applicant is the Kessler Institute for Rehabilitation, amendments to the Exchange Place North Redevelopment Plan, case number Second resolution is the resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant the number Spot Incorporated for a conditional use approval at 539 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Jersey City, New Jersey, oh seven three zero two, block one eight five zero three, lot nine, case number P-2023-0108. Third resolution of the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant Emerson Leasing Company Three, for amended final major site plan approval at 316 Fifteenth Street, formerly known as a portion of 239-259 Cole Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block six nine zero three, lot three dot oh four, case number P-2023-0074. Fourth resolution of the City of Jersey City is, the applicant is Kids Realty Company Incorporated, amendments to the Greenville Industrial Redevelopment Plan, case number And the final fifth resolution is the Planning Board of the City of Jersey City, applicant is Jersey City Erby Tower Two LLC, for administrative amendment approval, one eighty-five, one ninety-five, two fifteen, Hudson Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one one six oh three, lots twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-one dot oh four, and lot thirty-one dot oh five, case number P-2023-0097.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, could we have a roll call for this cap?
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin. Councilwoman Mayor Prince Ari.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston. Motion carries all in favor to memorialize the resolutions.
I just had a question, we had a letter for another motion, but it was not, it was not all.
All right, bring it up here, please. Let me see it.
Yep.
Might have been for tunneling, was it for tunneling?
Fayette.
That's weird. They noticed improperly.
Where, are you on Fayette Avenue? Okay.
Twenty-seven to twenty-nine? Yeah, that's our seventh meeting.
Yeah.
So. That was on the agenda as carried.
Yeah, that's, that's on there.
Have you sat here the whole evening? We're off the record, Mike.